Good evening and welcome to the ninth meeting of fiscal year 2026. At this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order and begin by introducing the members of the planning board and our staff. Would you like to start?
Cheryl Togias, Secretary.
Sean Feely, member.
Maggie O'Field, Field Member.
Jim Davis, Member.
And tonight, we have with us our staff, our Planning Director.
Liz Manning.
And we would like to welcome Avante, our new Assistant Town Planner. So, welcome. Thank you for joining us and we're glad to have you here tonight. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Yes, and Liz will give you a further introduction with a staff update. At this time, I'd like to now begin with administrative items, meeting minutes. We have five sets to approve, and I don't know if the members have had a chance to review these. There are minutes from June 16th, June 17th, July 10th, sorry, June 26th, I skipped those, and July 24th. Have the members had a chance to review and any comments on those minutes?
So, I have one set on the June 26th meeting that says Ms. O'Field said that she had met with the Town Administrator and Assistant Town Administrator regarding urban meeting law. And I didn't meet with them. I spoke with the Assistant Town Administrator.
Okay. So, you want to make that amendment to say that she had spoken with?
Yeah.
Spoken with, instead of met.
With the Assistant Town Administrator.
Still trying to get in there. Okay, not the Town Administrator.
Correct.
Okay. So, do you want to take that? You can read that.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
I don't remember any comments.
Okay. So then, if I could have a motion to accept those, the five sets of minutes?
So, Meredith, I wasn't here on the 26th.
Okay.
And I think Sean wasn't here on the 26th and July 24th.
That's right.
So, we have to do three separate motions here?
Okay, that's correct.
So, I make a motion to approve June 16th, June 17th, July 24th meeting minutes?
June 16th, July.
What about July 10th?
Was there a July 10th?
There was.
So, I was here on July 10th.
Yes.
But for some reason, I don't remember seeing those. But that's all right. I'm sure they're fine.
So, motion 16th, 17th, July 10th.
July 10th and July 24th. Thanks, Maggie.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Great. Okay, and then separating out the June 26th.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 26th minutes as amended this evening.
Maggie, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, and we'll do roll call on this. Cheryl?
Do you have to do roll call now?
Well, all in favor? Aye. Only the three, and then two of the states. Sorry. I was going to record. That was just individual votes, but that was easier. Okay, great.
Oh, I can see the 10th. No, I'm good.
We have our future meeting dates, and that, we are not meeting the week of Thanksgiving. So, we have our next meeting dates will be, let's see, in December is a shorter month. So, we have, that would be our scheduled December 18th meeting.
The 11th.
I'm sorry, the 11th.
The 11th.
The 11th, and not the 18th.
And just the one?
Just the one.
Just the one in December?
Unless we feel that we need to add a second for some reason, but I think at this time, it can be just December 11th.
I think I'll miss that, unfortunately. But I'm in New York for work on the end of that week.
Okay, thank you. I'll note that. Okay, so December 11th.
Okay.
Great. Okay.
And then my goal was to have kind of like a look ahead calendar?
Yeah.
At the December meeting, and then we can kind of talk about it maybe?
That would be great.
Some of the dates and try to, you know?
Have sort of a timeframe and spring town meeting and when?
Exactly, yeah. And just kind of look at some of those kind of a little bit further ahead. Yeah, I'm being selfish. It probably will help me too, to have a little bit more, you know?
I think that's a great idea.
Heads up for some of those. Maybe even if we do it quarterly, doesn't necessarily have to be a whole year's worth of meeting dates, but quarterly would be good.
That's great.
Okay.
And so with that, we can roll into the staff update. Liz, if you want to.
Sure. All right.
On your updates and?
And so, the first item on my, this memo that I prepared for you folks today, the goal is to have this in your folder the Friday before the meeting. So, I'm getting there, but we'll see. The first item on the memo is to introduce Avante. He's been on board for almost two weeks now.
Oh, great.
And he has recently graduated from Northeastern with a Master's in Planning, and he has an undergrad in Geography. And as I said in here, an excellent combination for a planner. I've worked with a couple of gentlemen over the years that had that same academic background, and they're both terrific planners. So, yeah, so we've been really busy, and it's good so far, I think. I think we're figuring it out, right?
Mm-hmm, yep. Learning lots, yeah.
So, if you want to say anything, or hand it over to you, or not to put you on the spot, but?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Liz covered a lot of the basics. I think for me, my studies have always been kind of focused in like the environment sustainability. So, my undergrad was focused in environmental systems. My graduate program was focused in sustainability and resilience. Over the summer, I did an internship where I worked with a nonprofit where I did some climate action work and some community engagement related to that. So, that's kind of been my focus, but I've been passionate about urban planning and yeah, everything related to it. So, yeah, I'm happy to be here.
Great, good. Welcome. Nice to have you. Anything else, Liz?
Yeah, so I had some conversations with Meredith about the Housing Production Plan and getting, you know, trying to get some feedbacks from the prior consultant that was used back in 2020, Karen Sonnaborg. So, I've reached out to her to hopefully get some sense on some, you know, scope and budget and, you know, kind of to be determined how that effort's going to get funded. We've been, we had a Traffic Commission meeting at the end of October. It was a pretty packed agenda. There was discussion of some valet parking in East Milton Square, traffic counts and calming measures in several side streets, some of which are being affected by the Randolph Ave Road Diet, some of which are kind of longstanding, you know, sort of adjacent to Governor's Road. Nick had asked me to pass along this link to a, I think it's a MassDOT meeting on November 20th on improvements at Route 138 and Bradley Road. I'm not exactly certain. I don't know a lot about that particular project, so I'll have to do a little bit more homework on that particular project, but he wanted you guys to know that that was happening. So, there's a hyperlink in that memo. Had a conversation with the folks that are staffing our Shared Housing Support Office. Very interested, actually, I just got an email back today from the woman who was the contact on that one. Very interested to get connected with them because I'm going to use them for as much as I can on the 40B stuff. And so, you know, not exactly certain what they're providing and kind of how it works, but I'm definitely going to be leaning on that if it's a resource that's there. Sounds like it was kind of like a, do you guys know much about that?
I don't know anything. Will you elaborate a little?
I think it was created, from what I can tell, I think it started as sort of like a regional effort among similar towns that were all being faced with multiple 40B applications. And so, this was like an attempt to have, you know, housing expertise available kind of on call.
Gotcha.
And so, yeah, so I sat in on, I think they do quarterly meetings. I sat in on that meeting. The other communities were, you know, clearly more, you know, engaged with what's going on with various projects in their communities. Hopkington, Medfield, Norwood, Sharon, and I think Randolph may have been part of it, but I think they dropped out recently. I'm not 100% on that one. So, yeah, so that's going to be a really good resource, which, like I said, I'm going to definitely lean on that for any kind of, you know, reporting or any monitoring efforts that are required for those projects. And then with the Sign Review Committee, so Avante and I attended that last night. Been working with Mike on, you know, kind of the process for getting those, you know, kind of ready for the committee to work on. It was really helpful because a couple of different types of situations, one in a residence area and then one sort of in, you know, kind of like highway adjacent area, the two locations. You know, very helpful to kind of get an understanding of like, you know, how the process works and what people are concerned about and, you know, how that affects, you know, sort of what you guys want to do with adjusting your bylaw for that. Open Space and Recreation Plan, had some conversations with Meredith on that. Hopefully going to get an update from Horstley Witten, the consultants, on that. Sounds like it's close to the finish line, and I don't want to get ahead because I know that's on the agenda too, to talk about that. And do you guys, oh, and I don't want to forget to ask if you folks want to maybe think about meeting in the fire station meeting room. So, that was sort of out there as a question for you guys to think about if you want to meet over there. Okay?
Terrific. All right. Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Yeah. Liz, is the Planning Department to have a member on the Traffic Commission? So, is that one of the memberships that I recall in the past? I think it's, I think it's the Planning Director is appointed to it.
To staff it.
Yeah, well, yeah.
But I don't know if that was?
It's a voting member. Yeah, so I think the sign review, I think maybe the Planning Director is ex officio, but I think on the Traffic Commission, it's a voting member, the position. So, yeah, but that's, I don't, I've just been at that one meeting, so I haven't really dug in too much to that of those projects and kind of what's going on within that world because this lot happened, and obviously. Yeah. You know, I mentioned in the final report of the MPIC about the Traffic Mitigation Committee's report from 2020, and there are some recommendations in there that are really, I think, still very relevant. And I don't, one of the things that we highlighted was that there's nobody sort of owns the follow-up on the recommendations of that report. So, I think if you could redo that report and think about whether you could bring, you know, some of those recommendations to the committee, or at least even the report to the committee, because I'm not sure, you know?
Yeah.
What, you know, committees change and staff change and everything, so like it might not be something that some people are familiar with.
Okay.
And whether they feel like they have the ownership of it or not, at least it would be good to be aware of it. There's some really good work there, I think. And then you didn't mention the Economic Development Study. And I don't know if you have an update on that, where that stands? I think it was the grant money was lost, right? Because it was? It was like an earmark or something? Yeah, it was either federal or somehow, I don't recall the details, Meredith. Maybe you do on what that funding was lost?
It was a grant that was given to us that was funded through June 30th, through the end of June, and at the time, it was going to be good through 2027. The towns would have had, or the end of 2026 or into 2027. But because we hadn't hired anybody, the town or the state, it was federally funded and the state did not get the money that they were counting on, so they are not honoring that grant.
We had hired someone though. We had MAPC, remember?
That's for the economic feasibility.
No, I think it was for the economic development too, right? They came and spoke to us like a year ago, maybe?
Oh, I'm sorry? That's why we need to talk about that. I'm sorry. Because we did encumber funds for the economic feasibility with MAPC, I believe.
Right. Yeah, that's being completed, that, they were hoping to come tonight, but the staff person at MAPC who's leading that up has just accepted a new position with the MBTA. So, she wanted to kind of transition whoever was going to come and report to you guys so that report on that study may not happen. I'm hoping it will happen on December 11th, the feasibility analysis.
The feasibility analysis, yes.
The Economic Development Plan?
We had initiated that, yes. That's what now I'm?
It was in progress, yeah. It just got, you know?
It got side?
When Tim Laftik, I think, ownership of it, just kind of got put on hold for a bit.
Yeah, so if we did initiate that, I would think that we paid the consultants at least a portion because they did come.
Yeah, there was about 14,000 paid to MAPC, and the balance of the earmark was canceled, for lack of a better word. I don't know, clawed back, I don't know. So, Avante actually sat in on TA session yesterday for, MAPC has their TAP.
Yeah, Technical Assistance Program.
So, that's due first week of December?
Yeah.
Grant application?
It's like somewhere around like December 3rd. Yeah, they, MAPC said that they're kind of flexible with the due date, but yeah, obviously if you can get it before then, that would be ideal for when they provide the grant award for the next year, which I think is in the spring that they provide.
Did they say what the balance would be of what we would, to complete it, what the cost would be?
The, that contract, I think, was 150,000, if I remember correctly.
It's big to do in economics.
Yeah, so I don't know if their TAP awards that much. I don't think they do. Has anybody gotten one recently? I feel like it's less than that.
But maybe we could?
Like around 30, I think it's what we've had, or maybe up to 40, but yeah.
And I think, I'm sorry, Nick did say, I'm recalling our conversation, he was going to try to see if they could try to get the same, you know, most of what we were trying to achieve, but maybe narrow the scope, or maybe we did a portion of it that would sort of get us to where we want to be coming at a lower cost. So, I don't know where that, if he's had that conversation on.
So, they can probably, my experience with that program is if they want to fund you, they'll figure out a way to make it work within the resources they have available. So, I think what we discussed was just kind of taking whatever the scope was for the prior effort and submitting it, something that's close to that, and then kind of, you know, maybe see what they come back with. They might say, you know, we need to reduce the scope because, you know, we can't afford this level of like?
But it sounds like definitely applying for that and trying to see?
I think so. That's going to be, that's my suggestion to apply for that project because it seems to make the most sense, and it also seems to be the one that's like, I mean, obviously the Housing Production Plan as well, but there might be some other funding for that, other funding sources for that. So, yeah, I think that makes the most sense.
So, can we get, so I remember the woman coming, and she came on a night that the Fruit Center was on. And so, she did sit through some of our discussion on that so she could hear kind of what neighbors were talking about or their concerns about having businesses. So, could we get a report up to when the funding stopped? Because she came to a meeting, she spent some time.
Our different?
We were upstairs.
We were upstairs, correct, yeah. I don't think Sean was there because I re-watched it. And so, if we could find out what the grant money was that we contracted with, what amount was actually spent, because I don't know how much effort she put in. I know she came to at least one meeting and it was more of a listening session, so I'm not sure what she did after that meeting. And then kind of get their bill up to that point and see what is left on the contract, what they owe us, actually.
And the total. If you can find out what the total was.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I think that's, I think that's very worthwhile to see if we can get some type of like a memorandum or something that summarizes like what they, like you said, what they heard at that hearing and maybe some of their sort of like preliminary, preliminary, you know, recommendations or what have you. Yeah, I can definitely do that. I have two more things, okay?
And just so I'm clear with how this works, MAPC has grant money, and we request, we write a grant, try to get that money, and then we turn around and hire them with that money? Is that pretty much what I'm hearing?
I think so. I mean, the most recent project that I did with them was in Quincy. It was a small business, a small business plan, and we applied for their Technical Assistance Program, and they, essentially, you hire them.
Gotcha.
You hire their resources. There were times in the past, I think, when they probably did have like other grant programs where you would have the flexibility to maybe go out and shop around for other consultants, and they may still have that, but I don't think this Technical Assistance Program is that. I think you work with MAPC.
Yeah, I'm not looking to rock the boat. I'm just trying to figure out how it all works.
Yeah, yeah.
It's interesting to me.
And honestly, it's been a bit. So, I'd have to kind of go back because I applied for that money pre-COVID. And so, all the federal stimulus and all the, you know, like this earmark, like that's all kind of, a lot of that stuff was probably like one-time money. You know what I mean?
I understand.
I don't know.
And my understanding is we do pay MAPC, I don't know why I'm thinking $17,000 a year. So, we pay them. So, what, my question is, do, what do we get in return for that? Is there a breakdown as to what we get for our payment?
We get the services of having a, I think, a world-class regional planning agency, you know, kind of at our, you know, available to us. I mean, they support, they support peer, you know, sort of gatherings. They do regional-based planning. There's, they have a ton of data that they, you know, population projections, a lot of work on in the climate world with climate resilience and sort of, you know, model bylaws. And I mean, I've used their resources a lot in my career. It kind of depends. I mean, it depends what the town needs from them. You know, if the town wants to go to them for expertise on, you know, like if the school department's thinking about, you know, do we want to build a new school in this part of town, you know, they could go to them for, you know, population projections and sort of like demographic analysis.
And that would be part of our, what we pay them?
Well, they?
And then not paying them to do extra? I guess that's what I'm?
Well, that's what, I mean, yeah, they also kind of function sort of as like a quasi, like, you know, they're like quasi, they're like a quasi-state agency in a sense, right? Because like the people that work there are state employees, I believe. I could be wrong on that. And so, and the procurement's a little bit different because they are like a quasi, you know, state, public agency. So, you don't have to do the same level of procurement when you go out for their services. But I, but my, again, my experience with them has been that they're, that they're really, you know, first-class group and they have?
I think the question you're asking is what do we get for the 17,000 if that's what we pay? And when do we transition to having to hire them as a consultant? Because we're, you know, we probably are, maybe that's the question that, right? Where we're allowed the information that they collect from their database, Liz, and everything else that they do as an agency, but at some point, we must, we must hit a line where we have to hire them as a consultant for something beyond. So, I think that's all you're asking, right?
Correct, right. Yeah. I'm just going to add that we do have representation at the town. Tabor Keeley is our town's representative. I think that means he serves on a board or serves on advisory committee of some sort. So, I'm sure if you wanted to reach out to Tabor, he could give you more information about what his role is and probably more about what our expectations are, yeah.
And I'm sure he would come to one of our meetings.
I'm sure he would. I would say a great example, based on the very little bit of research I've done onto this supportive Shared Housing Support Office, that creating that regional like ability, because I, and again, I could be wrong on this, but the consultants from Ascensure, I think they were, I think the firm that they started with was maybe bought by Ascensure, maybe, I could be wrong on that one too. But it's, you know, to have that resource available to the town when you don't have like the ability to have that level of housing expertise or even the time to do the monitoring, right? Like Mike and I were talking about it, how he used to have to wear that hat like in the community that he worked in, you know, in the past, because you don't have that, you don't, in a smaller town, you just don't have that level of expertise. So, that, that would be a really good example of a value that's brought to the table.
I don't think, I'm sorry, I interrupt you. I don't think it's about whether they bring value or have value. It's what can we get for what we pay them, right? What can we utilize them for, for what we pay them? I'm hoping that if our town sends a payment of whatever dollar value it is, there's a document that defines what we get in return. I hope there's, I hope there's something on paper that says?
I don't know how that works. I feel like, I feel like it's almost like an assessment.
It's off our cherry, it's off our cherry sheet.
Yeah.
So, just like the MBTA 2.2 million?
Yeah.
That might be fine though, but there has to be something that defines that every town, if you contribute, right, to supporting financially MAPC, this is what we're going to provide you for services, or this is what we're going to provide you. That's just simple and basic.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
They should be able to give it to you. You know, Tabor, Tabor's probably great, but we should be able to contact MAPC and say, what outlines what you provide to all towns that contributed to supporting MAPC?
Yeah, yeah.
And can any board member just call them up? Say if I have a question, could I call them up randomly and ask questions? Would they take my call?
Or could we access a database?
When I was on the webinar last night, that like, yeah, you can reach out to somebody and they'll answer and respond, so.
So, for example, I reached out to Josh Fiala, since we all know Josh, and I had asked him if there were any other examples of MPIC final reports, you know, that we could look at as a resource. And so, he reached out to people within, you know, their agency to get back to me. And then I also reached out to him about intra-town shuttle. Were there other towns that had that, that they were aware of any resources? So, again, he did the same thing, reached out, he sent it back to me. So, and if he didn't have it, you know, he could, he would send me to someone that did. So, I don't know, you know, if everyone knows, like they can reach out or if there is a person we're supposed to reach out or if we're supposed to do it through the Planning Department, but it'd be good to clarify it, you know? Yeah, I think so. I will, and you know what? I didn't, I didn't even know that there was an assessment on the cherry sheet. I didn't even know that. I mean, I guess I probably kind of knew it, but, but, so yeah, that's, we should, we should know that. We should know. We should know sort of like what the, you know, if there's a, if there's a list and what's on it. And I mean, I know the things that they've done for me in the past as far as, you know, technical assistance and facilitation and data and what have you, but I think that would be, yeah, I think that's very worthwhile.
Liz, do you know if Braintree paid the same 17 grand or how much, did they pay more because they're?
I think it's based on population.
Sure.
Maybe, or something, some factor is most likely. I'm sure Quincy pays, you know?
A little bit more, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I have two more topics.
Why don't you finish then? Okay. I want to bring?
Some of us went to the Select Board, Sponsored and Planning Board Posted, meeting at the, about the fire station in East Milton.
I saw it on TV.
Yeah, I just am going to suggest that planning needs to kind of be involved in the discussion, even though it was, I mean, at the meeting, I suggested that there needed to be more engagement before and more analysis. At least on my table, I said, you know, we need more analysis, economic analysis, like that's what, one of the interests of me in the Economic Development Study is like the mix of businesses, like how do we, a lot of people in my experience in being on the board and in the?
in the master plan committee back when, was people have an expressed interest in the diversity of businesses. And when, when there's a storefront that opens, people say, oh gee, I hope it's not going to be another Realtor, Realtor's office, no offense to Realtors.
Dry cleaners.
Or another dry cleaner or nail salon, because we have a lot of them. So like, you know, what does it take to get the kind of businesses? And at that meeting the other night, there was, there was some interest in like cafe, coffee shop, bookstore, you know, just places for people to gather kind of. Where a nail salon, you get a service, but it's not a gathering place, you know? So I, I do think one of the challenges too, as we all know, and our parcels in our business districts are small, you can't really park on, park the business on site. So, you know, it's, if somebody has to come now, if it's an existing business, you know, it's pre-existing non-conforming and they don't have to provide that parking. But if it's a new business in a municipal building, what's, what's going to be the approval path, I think we need to think about, you know, for a use. And I'm sure you're going to be interested in that too, right? And so I, I just feel like there's some more discussion that needs to happen, even internally. It's, you know, even if it doesn't come to planning board for some kind of official application, planning department definitely should be a part of the discussion. So, and I do think more community outreach needs to happen there. So I just want to make, just wanted to bring that up. And then the other thing is-
Just on that note, Cheryl, the select board doesn't have to, they're going to proceed with selling it or keeping it or whatever on their own, right? They're not asking us for our input.
Well, I'm just suggesting at least the planning department. And, you know, I can do, I, I'm happy to reach out to the select board and to Nick Milano, you know, and make these comments too. But I thought I would just raise them here just to-
They make the decision on what to do with, whether they're going to dispense of the property or not.
That's the feeling I got from the meeting.
But I think what the purpose was to say, okay, what does the community want? Do they want it to be dispensed of? Or do they want to see a new use or, you know, or restrictions on what can be done on that property? So this was a listening session, I think, for feedback through MAPC.
I understand all that. I just wanted to be clear that it's, it's, right now, it's not coming to us, is what I'm saying.
But would we, and is it appropriate for us to take an official vote to say either, you know, we think they should dispense of it or we think that they should keep it? Because there's no, I think that's the biggest question, not necessarily-
I think it's, it's premature to do that. But, but I think being part of the process and I think thought, more thought has to go into it. I think that's what came out of it. It's that they shouldn't rush to, there should not be a decision made.
I mean, I think I would support if we wanted to do outreach to say, you know, through Meredith, to say, we, we would like to be engaged in the discussion about this, you know? And, and think about with the building, you know, department and, and planning department, you know, how, what the path might be for a, whether it's a sale or a lease, you know, just, it's more about, they're going to make that decision with, hopefully with the most information and they've got resources that can help them make, you know, provide the information. So-
Yeah, but it's, it sounds like a building that people wanted to hang on to was, but more needs to be studied on it.
It's in the business district, right? So it's, I'm not even sure. A municipal use for a property in the business district, so it's not grandfathered as a business use, I wouldn't think. So I don't know. I mean, it, so what, if they did lease it or sell it and if they can't park it, right? So I don't know. It's just, it's a question I have.
You definitely want to think about that stuff.
You still have to get something approved, right? Whether it's ZBA or here. I, I just think that should be thought out before decisions made.
Unless of course we make it a parking lot, because Milton desperately needs parking. I know you're going to kill me on the historical aspect.
I do not support tearing down a building for a parking lot.
I 100% do. That would be my goal. The town gets to hold the land, so if you ever need it, you can develop it and you, you create valuable parking for East Milton Square.
And the question is, are there other properties that are, is owned by the town, a municipal building that is used, that is located in a business district?
Is the art center, is the art center in a business district?
So the art center, so that's what I was-
And the yacht club, I don't know if that would be considered a business.
Well, if it, right now, the town projects don't require planning board review, site plan review, right? Some communities I, I think that they do. But it was, you know, so like if a town, if the town did something with, you know, a field, was there adequate parking? Whereas I think that came to us before, like do, does the town review the parking for that field or the, the lights that they want to put in that field or review the new school design or whatever it is? And we don't now. So that's, that's something I think we, we talked about maybe thinking about in the future.
It would only make good sense to utilize your planning department and your planning board.
So I know on the, we kind of asked the fire station building committee at, for the town center one, but I don't think we really reviewed the East Milton one. And there's Atherton to come, so. And there's some discussion, I think, about whether to demolish the Atherton Station, which is another conversation, but I think-
That's a much nicer building.
That would be shameful.
East Milton Square is just ugly. Looks like two Legos.
I don't think, I think-
I mean, it's brick.
I don't know as to get to, I just want to bring out the one other thing. I would like to introduce our new building.
So a couple of people have asked me, how do I know if my property or whatever property is in the MBTA zoning? And I don't think that the parcel list of what's in that, I think this is something that was asked for before. And I don't know, like if somebody called the building department, if you have that parcel list, because the maps, you know-
Aren't that, aren't that easy to read?
Aren't that easy to read for people.
Yeah.
And some people who, who have asked are like right close to the edge, you know, like they don't know, am I in or am I out? And they just, then they want to know. Or is that property, my neighbor, in or out? And they want to know. So it's just a question that I put out there.
Did the consultant prepare that list for you guys? Did you, did you see that list?
No, because it was, the approval was on the citizen's petition.
Oh, okay. But it hadn't been created prior to that because that 25% was sort of like always out there, right?
It hadn't been created.
But it changed. There was some slight parcel change. There was some things that changed. So I don't think we, we saw, we didn't see the final parcels.
I mean, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be hard to do. I mean, I mean, someone just needs the polygons for the, who has, who has the-
I think you just need to ask UCL for them.
Okay, okay, yes.
And I'm pretty sure it matches up with the citizen's petition. This board had approved a, a plan and that it then rescinded about five days later. But that's what was the basis of the citizen's petition. So I'm pretty sure that UCL would have it, based on that vote.
And the AG has not finalized the MBTA zoning.
No, that's the one that's, I think that's the one they had until what, November 23rd or something?
There was an extension on that.
There was a, yeah, this, there was a date, yeah, right? Because what was that, five and six or something? Articles five and six?
And six was the-
Six was, was you guys. And then the five was the citizen's petition?
No, the opposite.
Opposite, okay.
It's the six that got approved, so.
Yeah, I think I just happened to see something yesterday or today that it was November 23rd.
Just so people can start putting applications in, because until it's approved.
Okay, so, so, so try to get a list of those properties.
That would be helpful, yeah.
I think just posted or somewhere on the town website.
Okay.
Would be great.
And if it needs to wait until the AGs.
Yeah, that's a, yeah, that's a good, that's a good question.
It could be something, you know, that it's still pending at the AG.
I mean, I could, I mean, if somebody really wanted to know, they could come in and I'd pull, I just, yeah, pull it up.
Yeah.
And show, and pull up their, pull up their property and tell them.
Yeah.
I mean, I might be, I don't have full access to all of the GIS, so I'll probably need to talk to Alan a little bit about that. Alan Bishop.
Terrific. And this is, I guess, just a little bit sort of part, oh no, we have it on there. Never mind. Well, I'll wait on the agenda. Anything else on that, Liz? Or that's good for your staff update? I think that was pretty comprehensive, okay. Now we have time for a public comment. If there's anyone here in the audience who would like to speak to something or anyone online, if you'd like to raise your hand, now is your time to be able to speak.
Don't see anybody in the audience.
All right. So if it's okay, I just would like to maybe move up item five, so we won't keep our building commissioner here any longer than he has to. But I would like to welcome Michael White, our new building commissioner. Please come and feel free to join us.
Nice to meet you guys.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Yep.
Yeah, welcome. We're glad to have you and-
Thanks for having me.
You're doing a great job. We hear wonderful things and I know you came before the historical commission and you've been kindly going to the different boards and introducing yourself.
Yeah, I wanted to at least start off with all the boards and committees that I deal with, that it'd be nice to have a face behind the emails that I'm sending out to everybody.
Absolutely. And yeah, and working with Liz, because you all work so closely together in the, with the planning department.
I'm hoping to get more caught up. I've been so busy, I haven't had as much time as I'd like to coordinate efforts.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It'll get better. I've been, anything that's a problem, I like to try to fix it as quick as possible. So I've been digging in deep and-
Great.
But actually, the ADU stuff's been big, trying to finalize what's right, what's wrong. I think I contacted the attorney general's office that reviewed our bylaw to get answers to some of my questions. And then some of it was over there and they sent me to other agencies.
It's all, yeah.
So actually, that worked out good that she got me connected with it. I didn't know, even know there was an ADU unit with the state, which they did a presentation at my Southeast Mass Building Officials training all day yesterday, so that was good.
Oh, great, that's good.
But we're like digging in the weeds, there's a lot of crazy zone and stuff that we didn't realize that they can basically cherry pick, take the accessory structure, eight-foot side setback, eight-foot rear, then take the 20-foot primary structure front setback, do a detached two-and-a-half story. So like figuring all that stuff out, what's right, what's wrong.
Yeah.
And then I want to try to with our bylaw, gel it all together, then have Nick Milano and KP Law look at it before we say this is what we think is right.
Right.
The process and all the, the rules, regulations. And we got a lot of stuff on the building code side that affects what happens too, especially when a unit's built inside of an existing home with fire ratings and things like that.
So how many applications have you received or have you received ADU applications?
We probably have about 12, I think, a lot of them. So that was an issue we weren't realizing. A lot of people were putting internal ADUs but doing a massive renovation to the house. So they were putting them in as alteration renovation. So when we came across that we were switching it to ADUs, future ones, we're going to have them pull a separate permit because they actually need separate hers raters because it's basically another house. The state energy department was actually at the training. They want a separate hers rater for the ADU. Then if the project, or if it's a new house, would be two hers ratings.
And a separate CO also?
Yeah, two separate COs.
That's good. It's a pain in the ass for you, but it's good.
Yeah.
Because we have, as a town, we have to track the ADUs and submit it. So if it was going as, as just part of a general renovation, then we're not tracking it as an ADU. So then how are we reporting it?
We're going to move in forward. Anything that came in as an alteration, we're calling it an ADU because that's more important to track that than the renovation. And then moving forward, we're actually on this paperwork, we're going to spell that out. If it's two, we want two separate permits because it's going to be two sets of different information needed for each.
Okay.
But a lot of, I think like I sent you on that site plan that the address should be the first thing. That's been another issue, that we want the address set before they pull the permit because it just creates confusion trying to, Alan will give it a different number. Now we have a permit that they pulled under this address and if it is an alteration in an ADU, we got a problem.
So a single family where they're adding, where they're adding square footage, that's going to come to us because they're adding, they're adding square footage. But it's all within the same existing single family. That's going to get a second address?
It's mandatory by the state law for it, if it's detached, internal.
Okay.
But the, the way we did our bylaw is it only comes to planning board if it's an addition or detached. If it's an internal renovation, it doesn't come to us.
Right.
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah, yeah. But, but you, somebody could be, somebody could be doing a small addition and then, I was, I was just curious if a single family with a small addition on the back gets a second address? Because the small addition contains the 800-square-foot, you know, ADU.
Sounds like every ADU gets its own address.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was curious about.
We've had basement ones that Alan's given it. So actually, we had between police, fire, all emergency personnel, he was trying to figure out how to make it a little bit easier for a first responder to know where they're going. So I don't remember if it's, if it's in the basement, it's the house number then B. If it's detached, the house number D, meaning detached.
Yeah, that's good.
Or first floor, second floor, just to help an emergency respond to know where they're going.
That's great.
So Mike, are you seeing any illegal ADUs or illegal apartments being legitimized with this new law?
No, a lot of inquiries about turning the temporary apartments into ADUs, tremendous amount of that. I think the fire rating's going to be of the biggest hindrance for anyone trying to retrofit into it, what, if it's an existing apartment that they have, a temporary apartment, or trying to morph a part of their house. Because they got to fire rate both sides of the walls, the ceiling, the whole ADU on both sides and a fire-rated cocoon basically. So you've got, as something already finished, you'd be tearing everything apart. The ceiling has to go over the top of the wall. So if the wall burns, it can't just catch the frame and above that. Fire rating has to be at the top of the wall. So it becomes complicated. Actually, at the end of the day yesterday, someone came in looking to do that and like it's complicated. I'd get a contractor, find out what it's going to cost. The fire rating's the biggest thing. And I said the only exemption is if you sprinkle a, and that could be cheaper, residential sprinkler system may be cheaper than trying to fire rate something that's already there.
And is the code forcing you to split the utilities also?
No.
No, okay.
That's a question I had, yeah.
Yeah, I believe they actually want it all connected because the-
So one meter and-
They're attached or detached is always supposed to be, they can't sell it off to someone else. So that would help prohibit that if they keep all the utilities to one, the primary residence and then they're just tapped off whether it's attached or detached.
So it would have one electric meter, one gas meter?
Yeah.
Interesting.
One water meter.
I thought it could be either.
But that's-
So depending on, I think, I think you could do both because I do know-
No, I think you can. I was just asking if it was required, if the code forces it.
An extra septic. Because, but you don't want to, if it's unnecessary, to have to add a, you don't want to force somebody to add an extra septic or an extra water line, you know, and go to that if it's not necessary.
Yeah, we talked about that too yesterday, which was good. So they said some things that could be completely unrealistic if you're gonna force them to pay 100 grand or 150 for a one-bedroom ADU. But there were other options, like if they had not enough bedroom capacity on a septic, they could eliminate something in the house and call that an office or whatever.
All right, there you go.
Bedroom, yeah, take off a bedroom and put it...
And by taking off a bedroom, then the, how would that affect property tax? Wouldn't really, I guess, if you're picking up a bedroom somewhere else, would the property tax be...
That's actually a good call.
It might reduce the property tax on the primary resident because, and then the other one will go up significantly.
Yeah. Is there any trigger?
I'm not sure on the property tax end of things, how that works.
Like, do you notify the assessor when an ADU is complete?
They have access to our system. Actually, I think they're paying extra just recently to like, I think it's gonna sink almost every day, which we need because when there's a transfer or sale, I'm not sure what the frequency of the system is. All the permidized systems are based on the assessor's database. So if we don't connect to them frequently enough, I'm reviewing permits, it's saying the owner's name. I just, the system, someone else. And even if I go to GIS, it's based on, it's the same. So I have to ask for a quick claim deed if they're pulling it as the homeowner. I need to know that it's really them and not someone trying to pull something. So that'll be helpful to get that squared away. Somewhere down the line too, the system's pretty powerful. And I don't know the split in Milton. I think tomorrow's gonna be month four for me. But how many are on septic? And it doesn't sound like there's a tremendous amount.
Just me and you.
I talked to Mariner and Border Health about getting those addresses and the system can alert me. So that would help me when there is a creation of a new bedroom. I'm hitting DPW, Mariner and Border Health because I have no clue if it's sewer or septic to get their approval. Sewer, it's not an issue. Border Health, septic, it could be an issue. But then I can highlight those. Actually, when you just mentioned the parcels for the MBTA zone and I could have that put into the system so it automatically flashed that this property's in the MBTA zone and district, which I mentioned to historic down the road. I'd like to, you get me the list, anything on the state and national historic register, anything significant. And we, I did it in other communities, a flash in thing. This is a historic property for us to pay more attention because we don't know. I don't know. I'm new here. It'll take me five years before I know.
I'm the same way, yeah.
Name and where every piece is and what it is.
So I think the easiest way to go forward is what Joe Pranduck would do is anything 75 years or older, just, you know, an email gets sent to Steve O'Donnell and he'll help, yeah, determine.
So I think right when I started, there was some contentious what demolition was. And the attorney said complete tear down and that's all they had control of.
Right, we have to go back to town.
But I do something that I think is significant. I'm just, as a courtesy, I just did one to let him know, even though he has no power, just to let him know what's happening.
So one of the things you've probably seen in your four months is that we have a lot of pre-existing non-conforming. And we have some things where now it's special permit and then it's variance. I would be curious, as you see the applications, what are you finding most common as triggering a variance? And in the pre-existing non-conforming, is it setback, is it height, is it... Because I'm wondering whether we need to think, look at the zoning further and not make it as difficult as it is currently for you and for owners of property. You know, where it's just, the zoning was added after things were built, for the most part, in Milton.
I would think that's our biggest roadblock is the zoning. We literally, the time we spend debating and trying to interpretate and there's a lot of sections. I'll read two or three pages, I got it, then I turn to the fourth page. Disregard everything you just said.
Exactly. So that's why I think we all support the codification, you know, where we actually look at making it more user-friendly, having tables, dimensional tables and cleaning. There's not even definitions that are consistent, right? There's not many in the overall. Then you get to one section, the definition of height is different than the definition in a different section, how you measure it. That must drive everyone crazy. I know that in my time, you know, I've become aware of this just from seeing things. But I would think it would be very valuable for you to take a look at a report that was done a few years ago where when we had the zoning code and the bylaws for the whole town codified. And they're on searchable and electronic now. But there was a report that highlighted a number of things that could be done and should be cleaned up, things that were inconsistent with state law, for example. So I think the clerk has that. But it would be really, I think, beneficial. One of the things we've talked about was seeking, looking at funding to get that work done and to have your input and Liz's input into that and make it much easier. Because I actually think it's very wasteful to have your department have to spend a ton of man-hours or woman-hours, you know, on this. And homeowners have to hire attorneys. They shouldn't have to hire attorneys for simple things.
We just had a simple thing, but the homeowner pushed back on the pool setback 12 feet. But the bylaw says a new pool shall not be constructed within 12 feet of an existing structure. They had the pool and wanted it built closer and they said it says the opposite. I'm like, it can't be. This bylaw would be junk. So they pushed it and I had to have KP Law give an opinion and it is both ways. And they said that would be, just the bylaw would be useless if it was that way. You could put the pool in and then build wherever you want a foot off the pool. But how much money are we gonna give to KP Law when we could just fix the bylaws and make it understandable?
Yeah, so all of those things that you encounter, it would be good to document so that...
I do have a run-in list.
Great, great.
There's like, just the accessory structures is a conflict. One section says the height's 20 feet, one says 21. And it's actually not in the height, it's in the side yard setbacks, the heights of the accessory structures, which makes no sense.
Right, that's a great...
But I had early on shown, Nick Milano, I gave him from one of the previous communities I was in, the table of uses, and I said, you can look at this in less than 10 seconds. They can see what they can and can't do in every zone and district, every use that's allowed and not allowed. Same with the dimension and area and lot coverage and other table that you can instantly figure it out.
Another thing I think that would be helpful is the non-conforming businesses that are in residential zones. Because we have seen that, like, let's just say with Milton Marketplace. But there's other things, you know, like 7-Elevens in several places, you know, other things. And they're kind of, have to go to the zoning board of appeals that when they need any, when they need a change done or want to make a change. And so I think it would be interesting to just understand how many of those there are.
There's a ton.
Yeah, so I think, you know, having those...
I showed them that too, but I think it was more variance in one of the communities. I had five things that I could approve. If it was just one thing wrong, missing frontage, missing one setback, I could grant it, not have to send 500 applications for variances. But we do, we have a, right now, a tremendous amount of non-conforming stuff going to the ZBA. I think they're booked into the Fourth of July just about.
And I think that's the kind of thing that we should look at, what we can do on the zoning revision, zoning amendment. And your input on that would be helpful.
Yeah, that'd be great if, I don't know, the funding, that's the biggest challenge, I'm assuming. But to get something started, because I know it takes a long time. It's something you can't just do in a couple of months.
Well, don't we have 40 grand allocated for recodification?
We didn't, I don't think got that.
We requested it. We requested 50.
But we have 50,000 that we have been tapped into for this fiscal year.
Let's blow it on recodification.
We have a lot. That's why we'll talk later about...
It's why I wanted to get Mr. White's input on the codification and what he sees so far in the four months.
Well, we have $4.5 million in free cash. So I think the selectmen could be able to afford the recodification. I think we should use our budget to hire like KP Law to help write our zoning. They have the ability to do that.
But that can be also with, within their contract.
Oh, okay.
So there are things that they can do within...
So I think it would be very helpful if you outlined, just thinking if you wanted to make a case for free cash use, say that would save your department X number of man-hours. And then you think about like the building permit values of this and the, basically, people's property tax will go up and they make improvements, right? So all these things are in a log jam. They're costing you, the town, more money because of how much time it takes you. Costs the homeowners more because they have to hire attorneys and maybe architects too before they hire their contractor. And, you know, so they might have to hire them in advance of even knowing whether they can do it. If it's easier for them to figure out whether they can do it and it makes sense, I just think it's gonna be so much better.
It kills me. We actually see the burden put on, the contractor puts it in thinking he's good to go. And then they find out they gotta go to the zoning board. And then they're so far out. Then actually, one, I think this week, the woman, they bought the house to renovate it and get it ready for their new baby and they can't go into the house, contractor can't start. And Bill's, I think, booking into January, February. And every week, it's getting further and further out. The holidays obviously aren't helping anything the next few months.
Well, and just as a side note, at the budget coordination committee last week, it was brought up that we need to come up with ways to slow down our growth rate. So this is actually doing it.
Slow down your growth rate and what's...
That was brought up because we can't keep up with it financially.
But what growth rate do we have? We don't have a big population growth rate.
It was just, it brought up that that's what our next assignment is to do, come up with ideas to slow down our...
Other than the 40Bs, there's not a tremendous amount. Like, I'm used to, but not in South where I'm living, Bridgewater, we'd have 200 or 300 new houses a year. This Milton, it looks like 10-ish maybe, but the 40Bs, that's another story. But there's an unbelievable amount of people renovating, taking these small homes and doubling, tripling the size of them, putting massive additions on. That's the biggest thing that's happening.
That's what people want, big houses on small lots. Nobody cuts their own lot anymore.
They don't want to lose their 3% interest rate.
That too.
On their mortgage.
And maybe they like their neighborhood. Kids can walk to school. It's like, you know.
Well, there's a, where would they go is becomes the question, right? There's just not a lot of other inventory of things that are available. So I hear from people.
And so that's sort of the problem is people are taking the starter homes. They're putting additions on instead of moving. And then what happens is we lose our starter homes, which is also our downsizing home. So when people then say, oh, we don't have the smaller houses, like literally affordable houses, we don't have that. It's because we've allowed these houses to expand. So we are, in the end, a little bit hurting ourselves because we are allowing the starter homes to no longer become starter homes.
Well, one thing I've said before is that we have no FAR requirements for single families. And we only have, you know, the side lot lines, the setbacks are what are, and height are what control the size. We have more, far more restrictions on our overlay zoning, our MBTA zoning, than we do on our single family from a size perspective.
So is it tip, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is it typical for building inspectors to have a little bit of power to grant a variance? If, what you said is like if they have one or two things that are not in...
It has to be in the zone and if it's written into the zone and whatever that is. So of the other communities, I think both Bridgewater and West, I had that. If just one thing was wrong and it was defined what it was, I could grant it. And it was great that I didn't have to tell someone, yeah, you gotta go to the ZBA for variance for this.
Fantastic. That's not out of the ordinary. That's...
No, it's not. It could tie up. That's the other thing. A lot of these could tie up four months. You gotta get there, have the hearing, get the decision, wait the 20-day appeal period. That whole process could take four months easy.
Michael, can you share with us your experience prior to arriving here in Milton, where you've been in the past?
I was in West Bridgewater prior to here, which was, I think they only had like 8,000 people in the community. But, and I don't understand, they directly boarded Bridgewater, which is, I was a commissioner there. There was over 30,000 people. And that West Bridgewater is closer to Route 24. And for some reason, their farm land didn't get developed. Bridgewater exploded in the 80s and 90s and 2000s, all the small town. We had like 15 family-run farms back then and they just, I don't know what happened. The government did something with the milk, subsidized the cost and it put all the little independent guys out. And they just sold their land and there were two, 300 house subdivisions going in everywhere, exploding. Then West Bridgewater, in the more recent, that started to happen because Bridgewater built out most of the land. So they slid to West Bridgewater and a lot of large speck warehouses, like 500,000 square-foot empty warehouses waiting for Amazon or someone like them to come because they're right on the Route 24 corridor. I was actually, when I was polishing up my resume to apply here, I was looking at what I, in Bridgewater, I don't know why, but they had me into everything. Traffic study committees, housing partnership, I was the chairman. I produced the housing production plan.
Ready-go list.
Get the green community, put the green community stuff together with me and one of the town manager's secretaries were involved in everything. But the list, I looked, I'm like, I forgot most of the stuff that I was involved with. But it was a great learning experience.
How many years were you in Bridgewater, Michael?
About 12.
In West Bridgewater, how long?
Eight.
Okay, yeah. So you spent a lot of time in that community, yeah.
Yeah, I love to learn. So I know that's, I got into it when the town manager, he actually had me fill in his seat when he couldn't go. I was broker in power purchase agreements for solar fields with Bridgewater State University, going into Boston to, I forget what it used to be called, Battling 40B Developers.
Wow, announcing the Housing Appeals Committee, the HAC.
Prior to your work in Bridgewater, were you...
I've been self-employed, running my own construction company since the ninth grade of high school. That was my main career, still doing small stuff on the side for friends and family. So coming up on like 40-something years.
That's great.
So can I pivot, speaking of being in the construction, the new specialized stretch code? How are you finding how that you can ensure compliance with that? So it's new construction. We don't have a lot. But the 40Bs, are they subject to it?
Yeah, there's commercial criteria that they have to meet. So those all have to have a hers raider, which I've actually been having trouble with the hers raider. That's, I had to get in touch with the state, whoever's in charge of them. They give us an initial report that shows the numbers. But on the top of it, it's supposed to tell me what... to tell me what codes they modeled their report after. And some of them are coming in blank or with codes that are five years out of date, so I have to keep, have the hers radar and put the right language, the 2021 base code with Mass Amendments, the stretch code, the specialized code, because I don't know and it, there's no way for me to tell what the computer modeled the energy compliances, multiple different paths to, to meet, meet what they need to do. So I've actually sent five more in today, I'm like, here's another batch.
Do you think, or have you ever utilized like some outside expertise to help you on these more complicated projects? You know, like for that compliance, because they're going to be needing to do their testing, like commissioning and all of that, right? So like, you feel like.
The 40Bs, I'm not sure of, I think 582, when I started, I kind of got thrown into the fire and that was half-reviewed kind of. And I, so they wanted the permit and I'm like, I don't see nobody. I reached out to everyone trying to find out who was the master of all the information and the decision that was required to be submitted to the town before a permit could be issued. And we couldn't really find anything, so I had to start from ground zero, go through it and get the applicant to give us everything. And now it's all uploaded with the permit. But in that particular decision, they set aside funds for, I think, the DPW and myself, if we need consultants or outside engineers on normal projects, we don't have that. We'd need to create some kind of a revolving account that we could, I don't know how to feed it.
So I have one.
I was gonna say, just on one that, because there were, there were particular issues with the stormwater systems on that, which definitely you'll want to have reviewed by engineers.
Yeah. So I know like 582, everybody, and then I held a pre-construction meeting and.
Go ahead. The neighbors came up?
No, not the neighbors internally, but that jarred some of the department's memories. Oh, yeah, we need this.
Right.
After they already thought they had everything. But that got issued and I'm comf, I like to know that everyone's all set. I would never, yeah, it looks like they reviewed it and just issue it and find out we never got, we didn't have 80% of the stuff that was in the decision required.
It's really important.
The zoning board of appeals should have provided that to your department, I would think.
Yeah, I asked Bill, actually, when, I think Cheyenne was like her last week and she couldn't find it because I thought maybe the planning department would like be the master.
Keeper of all the.
Keeper of all the stuff.
Which brings me to my next point, which is, I know the previous building commissioner had expressed to us that special permits, like we don't have a template, and so he asked, he had to go look at each special permit because what was required in one might be different than another. So going out to do a site inspection, needing to reread the permit, the special permit issued by this board, and I can't speak really for the ZBA, but, so, you know, anything that you would want to say to us to make your job easier on the enforcement side? So if you, once you're reviewing any special permit that we issue. So I'm thinking like probably one would be the memory care facility on Highland Ave, right? Because they haven't filed, they haven't filed for the building permit yet. And that went through a long review process with us. And so, you know, making sure that the, the conditions are enforced is, you know, important. And what we found, I think, oftentimes too, is like the tree protection is something that's hard to monitor and enforce sometimes. And it's really, you know, later, though, people will come back later and say, well, can we take this tree down five years later because they didn't protect it during construction?
So 333 Brushell Road, which was, they came in and developed, they clear cut the lot and it became drainage issues for butters and.
We had a subdivision in Bridgewater that, I think it was a 40B, they called it the preserve, and they clear cut 80 acres of trees to put it in.
Oh, God. And it was called a preserve.
Yeah.
Did they get paid for the trees?
On our, the gardener, right? The gardener school, you know, we put in the permit that they were only to take trees down as necessary for the construction progress, right? I don't know if that, how that, you know, gets interpreted by you, but that came out of this 333 Brushell Road that ended up in lawsuits. And, you know, that we, as a planning board, had to hire a civil engineer, a surveyor, through town council, you know, figure out how that was paid for.
Yeah.
And it was, it was a real mess and it was a real impact to some director butters to it. And so it was something where, you know, we, we learned that the position of these three houses had been approved by the planning board, but when they went for permits, the, they were in different locations and it didn't get flagged by the building official. And so when we're looking at the plans, that they're actually having the problems, we're like, well, this isn't where it was approved and that's not the grading plan that we approved, you know? And how did that happen? So this kind of, you know, if you tell us certain things are hard to enforce, then we have to figure out how to write a different special permit. So we need to work together in your input, you know, on anything that you're going to be looking at, not to go back in history, but like going forward.
Yeah, that 582 decision, they actually, there were a bunch of checks for different things. One was trees and landscape and a bunch, like if the developer bailed or they failed to do this, but it did not say who was enforcing this. I'm like, this isn't, yeah, I don't know anything about trees and plants.
And there is a historic garden in that site, so that should be marked off and somehow.
We got the check, but there was, who's supposed to be, it didn't state DPW or Parks and Recs or whoever would be the one handling this.
Or is that an instance?
If it were emergency stormwater issues, you would assume it would be DPW, but it didn't state.
So that's good.
Who had the access to the funds to use it.
Yeah, I got a call about, I got a call about Woodmere and an annual report on their, on their, I don't know, the storm watch system or what have you. And it's, I couldn't find anything in the file about it, you know? I don't know if it's been filed annually. Is it something that should go to the DPW because they might have a process for that? So, I mean, it's just been, there already have been sort of like multiple instances of, you know, enforcement and maintenance and, you know, kind of, you know, once the permit's already been issued. And so I think, I think that hopefully we'll work towards a development review system for these larger projects where myself, you know, my, the folks in engineering, the DPW, maybe if there's other town departments, the town manager's office, town administrator's office probably as well, that's sort of at the beginning. You make sure you get your pre-construction meeting, you make sure you have sort of like, you know, whatever, check-ins as the project unfolds. So hopefully some of that stuff will be like, there'll be just be communication, like as things are moving through the system. But, but it's just, it's just, there's a lot, there's a lot going on and there's a lot, there's a lot of stuff to be chasing.
Especially 582 is a big project.
That's part of my early growing pains is there wasn't anyone. Cheyenne was gone three days later, but I was trying to figure out the process and how the, the wheels gel together. And so I just, on things, I'm like, well, it could pertain to them, so I email everyone and I don't know, just.
Well, I mean, honestly, having a change at the building commissioner, the planning director and DPW director all at the same time, there's a lot of institutional knowledge that gets lost, right? And that's where the systems that you're talking about come into play, right?
Yeah.
And I learned too that with some, like even the assistant position, I think there's been at least four or five since I've been on the board and what, their computers get wiped after a certain period of time. And so all the documents that they may have had, you know, so I just started keeping all of my own copies of all the documents so I wouldn't lose access to documents.
That's what I did and I just created a new template for Milton from another one that I created somewhere else. Carl was like, how'd you do that?
But as you're starting new, you, you have an opportunity to kind of help improve those systems that would work better.
So I'm, things that have permits, I'm like, if you go into one of mine, a bigger problem, anything, I have, like in the chat, everything, anyone can go in, they'll go in there 100 years from now and know what, what was going on. Any pertinent emails are turned into PDFs and put in emails between me and whoever, if it's something that's not in the system. So all that historic data's in there.
Yeah.
We actually had what made me amped up down on Canav, the house lot, I think that it's been contentious, that had a variance but never got recorded.
Oh, yeah. It's a foundation going in.
And that was right when I started. Joe Wachoo, the previous commissioner, commissioner approved that, but in the system, no documentation. I think he had, the last entry was a stop work order. I'm like, great, he's gone, we don't know where he is.
Right.
So luckily the contractor had the email correspondence between himself and Joe Wachoo. I'm like, send me all that. And that gave me the evidence to back up, yep, he approved it. And then I put all that stuff in the system and released it. I said, this permit's active based on the attached emails from the previous commissioner with the dates. But that, I said, that stuff's important, like you said, those, all those emails, when the employee's gone, everything's gone.
Gone, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Have you had a pre-construction meeting on 582?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, that was your first day. I think I asked Nick Milano for your email and he gave me L Manning. So L Manning got the meeting request, not E.
Yeah, yeah, so I, so I, I'm, I'm looking at the decision for 711 because they want, Randolph, because they want a sign. And we're trying to figure out whether or not there's any language in any of the decisions about signage on Randolph Ave, so I'm, I'm looking at that. We took a ride past 582 and tried to figure out, you know, what was going on. I didn't want to go in because I wasn't dressed for it, but, you know, I'm, I'm slowly kind of getting up to speed with, you know, where the different projects are at and, and, yeah, I mean, I think it seems like Tim was sort of functioning as like the, like the quarterback, for lack of a better term. I mean, and so, so, but there's also, there's a, there's a ton of information on the town website. Somebody kept really, really detailed records on all of those projects on the town website, so there's like multiple, multiple folders for, for a lot of them. So, yeah, it's just trying to get a handle on all of it, you know?
Who's in charge of the website? Because they have Nick Con as still as the contact person for planning board.
I think, I think, I think Avante and I are supposed to be figuring, figuring that out.
I just had my login yesterday.
It's gonna be a wonderful website.
I've been, I've been waiting to have business cards, I've been waiting to have business cards printed because I didn't want to hand them out. Yeah, no, that's gotta get fixed. That's, yeah, that's gotta get fixed. That what, that's why they was calling me?
That's funny.
Sorry.
Well, this has been helpful and I hope we can, you know, continue the communication and working together in any way we can support you. Just please feel free to reach out through Liz and let us know.
That's how I prefer to operate, instead of me operating in the building department silent and then there's grenades blowing off everywhere.
Absolutely.
And headaches after the fact are much worse than trying to figure everything out upfront. I prefer to get everything upfront, issue the permit and hopefully have a smooth headache less project.
Absolutely.
And to Cheryl's point, if you do have a template of a special permit that you have found to be complete, maybe you should forward that.
Yeah.
You know, and maybe it's, you know, a business in a residential or a business in a commercial or a housing project or something.
I've been creating some templates just because of the non-conform and there's so many. I said, I need to create a review template, so I'm capturing all the same information because I can't remember it all. I'm like, I need this, this, this year that it was built, average grades, all this other stuff.
Right, yeah. Well, thank you and we're.
Thanks for having me.
We feel very fortunate to have you on board, so.
Thank you.
It's gonna be great.
All right, have a good night.
Great to meet you.
Thank you. Thanks. So with our theme of communication, one of the things that we've talked about is just having a running agenda item, committee updates, so, but tonight could be, I could sort of go first with the subcommittee that I sit in on. And this has been a very interesting committee because it's gone back to 2022, really. And it was, we, we currently have an open space and recreation plan, but we hired the consultant, Horstley Witten, and a committee was formed by the select board, which has representatives from the conservation commission, the planning board, the parks department, the playground planners, and then, and members at large. And what we began by doing is sort of looking at what our existing sort of the format was and what the state requires, because it's a state required, and it's required that we update our master, our Milton Open Space and Recreation Plan in order to be able to get future grants, that we're looking at how we're planning, how we're utilizing, what is our land use in town. One of the things that, and Tim was sort of overseeing the committee, was we put out a survey to the town. So there is a survey, there's survey results. I don't know if you remember me bringing these cards to a meeting one time, but Tim was passing these out, take the survey, just have one for each of you tonight, just to remember and please, you know.
I just pass them.
Pass them on, yeah, you can pass them on. But this was our outreach.
Thank you.
And in addition, we also did a public.
Good idea.
We also did a public forum that we held at the library. So there was results from that public forum. I think a lot of us, I don't, I can't remember exactly who attended, but it was really saying, what do you want to see in the town? What are you looking for from your parks, from your playgrounds, for, you know, conservation land? It was a, just, MAPC ran it and it was, or, I'm sorry, Horstley Witten ran that too. And it was really good, the library keys room was filled and there was a lot of good communication on what people wanted to see. And it directly, a lot of it directly relates to the master plan on sort of the goals and the initiatives carried through. So, community forum, there's been a survey, but then we went into the process of identifying the parcels of land. And this really ended up taking a long time, working with our GIS coordinator, Tim, and really evaluating, all right, we've got all these parcels. And honestly, you know, the conservation commission didn't even know what all of the conservation parcels were and what is, what is protected conservation land under what is, what is conservation but could be disposed of? So what has, you know, in perpetuity, what is preserved, what is DCR land? What is, what is privately owned land that either has a conservation restriction on it or doesn't have a conservation restriction? So when you start getting into all of these, it really, it's been good because I think it's never really been addressed in the town. And there's a lot of little small parcels that had during, when John Cronin was town administrator, a lot of the, the reason why some of the scenic roadways are as beautiful as they are is because John Cronin, the town, it was before Prop 2 and 1/2, the town was flush with cash and was able to buy up intersections and corners, like the lily corner, like the horse trough corner at the library, when you stop and you see the horse trough. Different intersections have little small parcels that the town owns that it would never make sense to sell or they could never be developed, but it helped protect sort of the green space along, along the road, a lot of the scenic roadways. So that has been sort of identifying all of those parcels, then all of those results of what we had was sent to the committee. The committee, Horstley Witten was going to then send all of those results and those identification of parcels to the conservation commission for their review. And then the next step was, the plan was to then go to the parks department after that. But I think that's when Tim left, so it had gone to the conservation commission. I don't know if they ever really did an in-depth evaluation of those. I don't know if they ever really did an in-depth evaluation of those and looking at them. And there's been some changes to conservation land. There's been additional properties acquired. When the last open space and recreation plan was done, the Eustace Estate, Historic New England, bought that parcel and protected the 40 acres, you know, and then bought the two adjacent parcels and put a conservation restriction on those. So that was new. The Wakefield Estate was also new preservation. So some of these parcels are going into the history and what is when Forbes Woods was updated. Because there's been over time, different large areas that have been protected. But this was sort of identifying all of these parcels and making sure everything is up to date. So although it's taken a long time, it's really good work and we are close to finishing up. I think once, we just want to make sure that everyone can review all of these parcels and understand, yes, these are, these are actually protected or they're conservation that's maybe not protected. So, so that's also something that we've been trying to identify. And I would love to see sort of a color-coded map so people know what is identified as, whether it's DCR land, whether it's Milton Town on land, et cetera.
So is it a plan to change anything or is it just a plan which documents things?
It's, there's a plan that is, it is updating things that are new, such as the history. There have been, like, each, each person did some updates to that plan. And so I think that's taking all of this information and adding what has been done. It's, it's different from what sort of MPIC did as far as, it's not really done as a chart. It's more in sort of the body of the different sections. So playground planners wrote, I haven't seen what each of the updates had been. Horstley Witten has been working on taking that information and consolidating that.
So is it something where a body such as select board or planning board has to approve the plan?
My, I always assumed that it would have to go to town meeting.
To town meeting, okay.
I'm assuming that, but I should get clarification on that because I'm not.
I'm not, I'm not too sure. I mean, my experience has been that it gets, it gets approved by the state, right?
Or maybe it's the state, maybe the state goes.
So, but there, but there could be a local approval. I'm not, I'm not 100% on that.
So I think it would be.
I think you're right. I think maybe it does go to the state, but I was thinking maybe do both.
I know that the, the parks commissioners are working on a recreational master plan. They got CPC funding for that. And, you know, there's a lot of people who say, well, there's a shortage of fields and, you know, facilities for youth sports, et cetera. So I guess I'm wondering, is part of that plan identifying parcels that would be suitable for that? Or is it part of it just saying, here's conservation, here's parks, here's?
No, there is part of that, which I, would I, and that's what I think the parks department was supposed to write that part of it.
Okay.
But I have to say Ted Carroll had been the chair of this. And then there was a new person who came on who really didn't attend the last couple, the last person who was a representative didn't attend many meetings. So I don't, I don't know where that ended up being from the parks department. Because I think one of my concerns was that I didn't know if the parks department even knew the open space and recreation plan was happening. So I did confirm with Nick that he felt that they were very different. But there is, that's why there's a representative from the parks department to be the liaison to make sure that whatever that section is, is, is trying to identify and helping the parks department identify those parcels.
Well, hopefully, there'll be a sort of a communication about the two plans because I know that the parks department, when, in the presentation they gave, you know, to the parks and the commissioners to CPC, they were like, we can't do, we can't reply for grants because we don't have an approved open space plan, open space recreation plan. So I know that they seemed, kind of wanting to get it, get that across the finish line. And I, I don't know, I, I'm just curious like how, if there's anything that, let's just say it's town-owned land, but it's not identified as parks jurisdiction or conservation jurisdiction. You know, like one, I know when the animal shelter was looking for land, you know, they had to go to the planning department and say, what land might there be available? And then, of course, when the school building committee was looking for land, they had to do the same thing. And my recollection is that there's not a lot of town-owned land that's not either parks or conservation. So.
That's correct. And I think that's been part of the problem when it comes to whether it's affordable housing, whether it's parks, it's, we are so built out, or, and we have, we have the Blue Hills, we have the DCR, which consumes a huge amount of, which is a wonderful thing. I think it's a great treasure that we, that we have this, this land, but there's limited, the town unfortunately has historically sold off any, there's been a lot of land given to the town and the town disposed of it. And so wasn't, I think, and the years going back, wasn't strategic in preserving, was not preserving the land. And, and so now we really don't have access. But that's why CPC funds are great at looking at, do we acquire?
Yeah, so I guess, I just would be curious what the recommendations are going to be coming out of that plan and then how it dovetails into any other needs. Because as, you know, the presentation that I gave a town meeting, I, I, all of the work like the people do on the individual committees, whether it's the school building committee or the fire station building committee or these open space plans, like who's looking out over all of it? You know, it's like, there's limited town-owned land. And is there somebody who can say, you know, here's our inventory of property, here's what's in conservation, here's what's wet, you know?
And that's what's taken so long.
And then, you know, what else do we like have that we could use for something if the need arises? You know, to your point about not selling everything off, I think you've said the same thing. But I don't think anybody has that list. Maybe that's part of it.
That's what this is.
I know Tim worked on one and Bill before him worked on one. And it would, it would just be good not to have a recommendation, you know, to sell or to convert to conservation or convert to parks without having the big picture in mind first.
Yeah, and that's what this, and that's what is, it is sort of a holistic view of all the land. I don't think there's recommendations to necessarily like dispose of something or buy. It's not that specific. It's more in general, what are our assets?
I see.
And what are our goals? Like what are our goals for playgrounds? What are our goals for recreational fields? It's more general in that scope, not really making a recommendation. So I think that's why maybe the state, it's more of a state level than, because it's not requiring any specific decisions, but more of goals. But I did send Rob Lavash a draft. I said, it's in a draft form, these aren't finalized, so that the parks, because they were chomping at the bit to say, what can we, you know, where can we look? And I, I said, we're, we're really getting into the weeds. I'm just trying to identify what parcels are designated as.
So in the, in the designation, so we ran into this in the land swap. And so, you know, since whatever, 1978, the Pope's Pond land was approved at town meeting to be deeded conservation. And for whatever reason, it never got deeded. So it was left to, yeah, it wasn't recorded, so it was just left as municipal town land. And so when I did the walk with the conservation commission a couple of years ago and this was revealed, you know, I said to them, I said, well, this was on a Saturday, I said, well, why don't you just walk down on Monday to the registry of deeds and get it deeded? Because that's what it was supposed to be. And they said, well, it's not as easy as that, you know? And then I called the environmental, the office of environmental affairs and I discussed it with the gentleman in there. And he told me specifically, yes, we told the town of Milton reps that this Pope's Pond land should be deeded as quickly as possible. And they wrapped it up into the whole land swap. And it really shouldn't have been, I mean, eventually it could have been voted on at town meeting to be land swapped, but the process was just jumped. So that's my biggest issue with this whole land swap. My whole entire life, 56 years, the land at Pope's Pond was always protected conservation land. And for whatever reason, it never went to the registry to get deeded. Now all of a sudden was hijacked and now it's considered like new, new conservation land. And it's really not new, it's always been that way. So is this going to actually say who is the deed, not just like Conservation Commission? I mean, it has to be like deeded to the conservation.
It has owner.
Yeah. Where then the owner of the parks department. Because even up off Randolph Ave, my understanding up off the access road, there's park-owned land up there. And when we did, I think, the, the capping of the dump, I think quarry hills gave the town of Milton like $100,000 to create new fields up there. And instead, at that time, they decided to take that money and put it to the fields like at high school. So they diverted the funds from what the original request was. So now we have fields up off the access road for park and rec to use, but now there's probably not any money to make them usable fields. So like, I think we need to have a list of every single parcel. And it has been frustrating. I've tried looking, you know, for it. And you can't find the information anywhere and it's not accurate and what we know in our institutional knowledge is no longer accurate. And to me, I'm afraid of this because we have always relied on people, the generosity of the residents of the town, to actually give to the town of Milton land. And my fear is that goodwill is probably gone. And, and I think we need to somehow reestablish that somehow. And so when we encourage people to, to donate land. And even just as Michael White was talking about, all the farmland and bridge water, the town of Milton is actually very short-sighted in protecting our agricultural uses and giving farms a tax abatement. Because if you get, if a farm is classified and get a tax abatement, then when the farm goes to sell, the town has the first right of refusal to buy. And so there's a benefit. And that's where all the fields and the schools in all of these towns in like Dover and Westwood and Sherborne, they're all getting built on farmland because they were, recognize their right to farm town. And then the town has the first right of refusal to buy. And Milton doesn't recognize that.
Are there any, I mean, Indian Cliffs was a big farm I heard, like that was developed in the 70s, right?
Horse farm.
But two parcels that I'm thinking of that I don't know how well they're documented. One was that Tim Zerwinski had identified when we were doing planning at Milton Landing. At the very end of the landing, it's like a mud flat thing there, but that was donated to the town for a beach. And it's just in the, kind of at the end there and it's, nothing has happened with it. Another parcel, which is next to 7 Brushel Road, where the DCR property is, there's a three-acre parcel there that apparently is under parks jurisdiction. It's supposed to be a playground there. A playground was never built there. And so like what's the, like what happens when it's donated for that use and it never happens? I don't know. But there's those kinds of things that are there, right? That are in some of this land. And then the question is, what do you do if you, if you can use it for a different use?
Well, same with like on school streets. There was a house on school street that the town got, you know, tax title to. They demolished it. And it's within walking distance of a trolley. The town, it was an ideal place to put affordable housing because there was an existing house there. And now it was tied, it got eaten up into the land swap. So I remember talking to Tim with this and Tim was furious that, he goes, here, we have a legitimate place that would make a great place for affordable housing. It's walkable, but now we've just included it as conservation. So we took buildable land and put it into conservation.
I think that's not the only place that that happened in the 75 acres.
Yeah.
And I think it's no longer buildable land. It's, a lot of that's.
It's wet now.
It was all wet, it was all wetlands. And I don't even know how they got a permit to build it in the first place. I think it was.
Yeah.
It wouldn't, the CONCOM.
Well, the land slopes off. You could probably do something with stilts in the back.
Yeah.
But, I mean, to Maggie's point about goodwill, I mean, if I was the guy who donated that three-acre parcel at 7 Brushel Road for a playground, it never got built and then the town decided to put affordable housing on it, I would be pissed. And if I was the next guy, I would never donate land again. I mean, that's like, that's what happened with the land swap in the, in the Lamb Sisters land. Now we're, we're setting the same precedent.
It could be a playground.
I'm saying.
Well, if you make it a playground, sure.
Parks jurisdiction and nothing's happened with it, is all I'm saying. It's, it's just that we have some of these parcels that have a use that they were designated for that hasn't happened.
Yeah.
And just like the beach, you know? And I don't know how many others are like that. Those happen to be two that I'm aware of, but, you know, there could be more.
Yeah, as long as the same use, you know, as long as you still do a playground, that's great. But if you look at it and say, oh, this hasn't, you know, we blew the money somewhere else on the playground, let's put something else up there. Put a parking lot up there.
Well, like the beach, the beach thing, it's never gonna be a beach. So then, you know, what do you, can you?
Well, let's talk about unbuildable. That's about as unbuildable as you can get.
But you can have another water resource.
Yeah, put a dock on it or something, yeah.
Like if that parks decided the playground wasn't appropriate there, but some other recreational use was. When you make the donation so specific, I don't know, I don't know the mechanisms for this. Does that mean it just sits there and nothing ever happens with it? Or can they petition to have something else done? I don't know. I mean, these are just.
That's where, that's where I've been asking, are the, it's conservation land, but is it, is it protected conservation land?
Right. And who controls it?
Because the other, the other piece is, and this is what I was asking them to identify, is we had had a Milton Land Trust up until, maybe probably 10 years ago now, that was dissolved. So all of that Milton Land Trust was then transferred into the, either it went two places, it went to the Wildlands group.
Okay, yeah.
And so I've asked, can you please identify what parcels are wild lands now? Or what went into the care and custody of the Conservation Commission?
Okay.
And are those parcels under the Conservation Commission now protected? Because they were protected under the Milton Land Trust. And I believe that transfer was the understanding that they would be protected when the, going into conservation.
It's interesting because CONCOM has no budget.
Actually, I think they do.
I was told they don't, but.
If there's parcels that you're interested in, if there's like a recorded conservation restriction on them, it's pretty, it should be pretty straightforward. We should be able to find it on the registry website, right?
So that's what I would love to find and I don't know if that's, if they're working on that.
I mean, are there, are there specific? I mean, I'm just looking at the map, I'm just looking at the state map, you know, that's available and has, you know, open space by ownership, you know, federal, DCR, Department of Fish and Game, you know, Commonwealth of Mass, county, municipal, public nonprofit, land trust, conservation organization. Like this is a, this is a, you know, a layer.
A statewide map of.
It's a layer that's available for, you know? So, so I haven't dug into this enough to figure out like who's done what already. I haven't even talked to the consultant.
Oh, that'll be helpful to maybe overlay that on.
Well, just based on what's been, just based on what's been spent so far. A lot of this work's probably already done, right?
Yeah.
I mean, this is just something that's, you know, this, again, this does, isn't going to tell you that, you know, this private, public nonprofit piece of land has this conservation restriction held by this entity that's whatever. It's not going to have that level of detail. But is that, is that the type of stuff that people are trying to figure out?
Yeah.
So, so I'm guessing that they've, that Horstley Witten must have done a, like a tremendous amount of this work. I'm guessing they have?
They have. And I sent you the, I did send the graphic and I'll share that with you. I just didn't, I wanted it to be a little more finalized and then have the planning board look it over too, to see, you know, if there's things that you might see that I, that I missed as the representative. But, but it's really good that we're doing this because I don't think it's ever been done.
So I had heard it was, Horstley Witten, that was the holdup at this juncture. So maybe just speaking to them about where they are with it, what, if they've run into difficulties, what's their timeline?
Yeah.
I guess.
We just, we.
That we have, you know, some view back.
Yeah, because it was really, I think when Tim left, it was just.
Okay.
Rudolph, I think, I think the effort of the committee is a great effort. You know, my opinion is. You know, my opinion is, this is the planning department. And that list, that's the placeholder for the list. You should be the keeper of, once this data is compiled. And, you know, when you, when I think through it, I think there should be, you know, identifying the source of the land. How is it that it's now Milton's property? Was it donated by somebody? Or did Milton acquire it in some other way over the course of time? What restrictions does it have? What jurisdictions in the town have control over it? Some pieces are controlled by Conservation. Some pieces are controlled by the Select Board. You know, I think a really thorough database of all the land and all of the, you know, I guess, all of the important factors of that piece of land. And it stays in planning and community development. So everybody would know that the keeper of the record of Milton's land is there. There isn't anything, there's no other department in town that, that I think should be the keeper of that kind of information.
And this does really fall under the planning departments.
You know, and then, then I think we have an opportunity, maybe even on an annual basis, to look at the land and to have discussions of what we can do with it. You know, if we're short on fields and the Parks Department needs fields, we should, you know, when you, when you consider what is, what is on our list of, you know, hopes for next year, for '26, maybe that should be one of them. One of them should be looking at all the open space and making some recommendations on something that could be done. But, you know, it strikes me as something that the information is not, you know, collected. And it's not in the same, it's not in one place. And, you know, maybe too many different groups in town have some ideas of what it is and what they want to do with it. And as a result, nothing happens. And if anything comes of it, the people that contribute land will recognize that the town cares. And if we demonstrate that we care, people will be more likely, you know, we have a process for how we, how we use the land that's given to the town. Maybe people then will care a little bit more and they, they won't have the reaction that you're worried about. You know what I mean?
And I think that Milton Land Trust is something that should be revisited, bringing it back. I think it was, they were aging out, it was Peter Jeffries. There was a few people who were on it and just couldn't keep, they didn't want to be responsible anymore for the trust. And I know Judith Daryl Kemp had wanted to, who we've now lost, who was a Conservation Commission member, wanted to keep it going. And she ended up, unfortunately, passing away before it was dissolved. But I think that's a really important thing because it does, there is a trust. When you, when you donate land and it goes into a trust, that it will be in perpetuity. Or, or it will be for the purpose, you know, it would be for the purpose also of what it was donated for.
And it is kind of sad that the land had to go to an organization outside of Milton, right? So the Wildlands is outside of Milton. I do believe we have a Milton resident who's actually on the board. But it's just kind of a shame that it has to go outside.
Yeah.
When does the committee think they might have a?
Well, Liz has, has reached out to Horsley Witten, to Craig, our consultant, to re-upstart, you know, sort of get us back on track. Because it really was, it was, when Tim left, it was sort of, because he had been working very closely with Craig on identifying these parcels and with our GIS sort of mapping department. So I think, I think we're in the home stretch. I haven't seen the final, you know, what people have updated as far as playground planners, Parks and Rec, what their updates are. So.
Yeah, yeah. And I'll, and I think that's part of what I need to figure out too, is sort of like who the key people are in these different, either on these different committees or in these different departments that are, that are, that are serving up the meat for the sandwich.
Yep.
You know, because that seems like, you know, putting the plan together. It sounds like there's been, there's been nice outreach done. There was a survey, there's been a process. But now it's sort of, you know, just kind of pulling it all together. And, and I'm still trying to figure out who, who, who's got what piece of it, you know?
Right. So. Good. So yeah, so stay tuned. But that is sort of just an update and sort of what our, the committee's been doing and where we are in the process, so.
So thank you.
It's a good group. It's a good group.
Great work.
So. All right. So next, we can move to item number six, ADU site plan review, the draft rules and regulations. And thank you. This is another really good, helpful step in, which ties in sort of to what we were talking about with our building commissioner, but ways to help streamline information as applications have been coming in. Liz, I'll turn it over to you to sort of, if you want, I don't know if you want to pull up any documents or read through anything, but.
Yeah, I didn't really have any. Do you want me to share my screen? Do you need me to do that?
We don't, we don't need to. If you want to just sort of maybe highlight it and run through it.
Yeah, if this is, this is, this is really simple.
It's sort of a work in progress still.
Yeah. And Mike got back to me on, he's, he's looked at it and he, he's, he's comfortable with this, with this approach. So his only addition was to, the first stop's going to be to Alan Bishop to get, to get the second address for the property. And then they'll be able to come into the building department. They'll be able to start their permit, you know, application permit process. Sounds like Mike, which is what I'm hoping happens. It sounds like he wants to do a separate type of permit application for the ADUs so that they're differentiated from the alterations and renovations. I was seeing just like a single, a residential permit when I was looking in there. So, so I'll, I'll have some conversations with him about that. But essentially, they're just going to be uploading their, their documents to permit us. And, and then probably printing something out for us because we have like a, we have an obligation to act within a certain time period. It's not the same time period that he, I believe his is 30 days. So I want to make sure that when something comes to us, we sort of like have like a start date, like a stamp date, you know, and that we've got this, this time period that's in the bylaw that says it has to be, it has to be no less than 30 days after date of submission. So I think that means that we have at least, what, 30 days, right, to process it? I think it was that sort of the idea. And then, and then 75 days, you guys are supposed to, to rule, to recommend or whatnot, within, within no more than 75 days after, after date of submission. So that's all, that's all in here. It's really just these four items. Some of it actually might already get captured in his, in his permit, you know, application, the existing square footage, the proposed square footage, the architectural plans showing the layouts, what have you. That's probably already going to get captured by him. I don't know that they would do, well, yeah, he probably would get exterior elevations as well, right? For, for, for like a, an alteration or renovation. So really, the only other item I think that's going to be sort of on top of what would have to come into the building department anyway is the, is the site plan. So that's pretty much it. I put in, in some language in here about being able to, to deny it if it's incomplete. It's probably worth it to have it in there. I don't know if there's going to be any pushback on that because I know the, the whole, you know, protected use thing.
Yeah, the AG's letter was very cautionary about denying anything.
Yeah, well, this is, this is not denying it. This is, this is an incomplete application. So if, if it's deemed to be incomplete, they'll be notified in writing and given the opportunity within a specified period of time. But if it's, yeah, if it's the subject of a notice that's not brought into compliance, it will be denied for failure to comply with the rules. So if the rules are considered fair, then I'm guessing that that's probably, especially if there's a process, if there's a very clear process for that. I could see somebody not wanting to spend money for a, for a surveyed site plan.
So I had a question about that. I think it's good to have that in there. But what if the applicant actually gets denied for whatever reason and then wants to resubmit because they get their act together in three months? Is there any time limit that will, I guess, deny them the opportunity to resubmit? Or can they just?
I don't think so.
Like, I wouldn't want to shut somebody out if, let's say, they're on vacation or they had some kind of a financial problem, but then they, you know, sort of, okay, you know, I can't get this last document in, but maybe in three months I can. They do, they've already been denied, they come back to you. It's just a simple resubmital and a new fee? You know, I have no problem with, with the way this is written. I just don't want to shut anybody out for, I don't know, death in the family or something, or.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't see, I don't see that that would be an issue. You know, it wouldn't be sort of like, what, like if you get a no vote, you can't come back for two years?
Exactly. That's exactly what I'm thinking.
Yeah. It's, I don't, well, I mean, I, I wouldn't, I don't see that that could happen. But I guess, hmm, if somebody wanted to push it from the other direction, maybe, and say, well.
You can't come back.
Why are you letting it come back?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's valid. I, I don't know the answer to that.
So maybe you just put a sentence in saying it doesn't prohibit you from resubmiting a complete application.
Yeah.
So I think, I think this is something where the AG's letter, you know, it says we should, it should be reviewed, the bylaw should be reviewed and this comment letter should be reviewed with town council. And it's, and it's talking specifically about denial. So to.
Just not approved.
It says, "If the approved provisions in Article 38 are used to deny a protected use ADU or otherwise applied in ways that constitute an unreasonable regulation in conflict with 760 CMR 71.03, such application would violate general law Chapter 48 and the regulations." Anyway, it says, "The town should consult with town council and EO HLC to ensure that the approved bylaw provisions are applied consistent with general law." So I just feel like we should, we should follow up on that to be sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think that's what the building commissioner has been, I think he's been working closely in doing, doing that to make sure.
And then on the site plan, the prior building commissioner, if you're doing an addition or a separate structure, would require a site plan by a surveyor. So I don't know if that's, I can't imagine that that should be deemed an unreasonable regulation. But it's worth confirming.
Okay, okay.
Because I don't think a site plan is unreasonable.
You wouldn't need a site plan, yeah, but you wouldn't need a site plan for a, like the types of projects we've been talking about. When somebody takes like a 1,500-square-foot house and they bump it out in the back and they bump it out on top and now it's a 4,000-square-foot house, right? That doesn't require a site plan.
It has in Milton.
It has.
Well, they don't require it, but in some, if you're close to the property line.
Single-family house?
To confirm that it meets zoning.
If it's close to the lot line, sometimes they'll look at it. They'll look at the assessor's parcel and say, oh, you should probably get a survey for this.
A stamped site plan for a single-family house?
Well, survey. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. I'm mixing up my terms.
Yeah, not site plan approved.
So this isn't something that needs to go to the zoning board? Are you talking about setbacks and things? It's not something that has to go to the zoning board?
If you're in violation.
If you're zoning, our zone, building commissioner is our zoning enforcement officer, right?
Right.
So if.
No, I don't think so. I think it's a, isn't it a woman? There's a woman that I came, there's a woman's name. She is technically the zoning enforcement officer.
All right. Well, then, always in the past, it was the building commissioner. I don't know if that's changed.
Okay.
But.
So maybe this won't be an issue. Maybe people are used to, the contractors are used to doing it and it's not going to be a heavy lift. I don't know. I just kind of thought it was going to be, might be, there might be some, some pushback on it.
I think it's subjective, depending on how close you are to the lot lines. That's been my experience.
Okay.
So, you know, you want to build a deck and the sideline setback is 10 feet and you want to come to within a foot of that. They'll, they get it surveyed.
Okay.
But if it's in the back and you have 90 feet of backyard and you want to go off the backyard, you know, the back, the back of the house 20 feet, they're usually fine with it. You don't have to get a survey.
Okay.
I would, I would ask Michael how he's approaching it because it could be different now than prior commissioners. It's really, my understanding is like, they're the ones that have to sign off that meets zoning. So if a neighbor were to say, you approve this, Mr. Building Official, I don't think it meets zoning. Then, you know, what are they basing their decision on?
You got to leave one door open for the open meeting law.
I know, just cracked. Yeah, maybe you can open this door. Thank you.
I've done that a few times.
It's worth a conversation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, absolutely, no, absolutely.
How he's doing that interpretation because maybe it was inconsistently applied before.
Yes.
By a prior commissioner or plan reviewer. But it should be very clear for homeowners, for sure.
Okay, okay. Yeah, and that'll, and that'll get, that'll get looped into, you know, this whole sort of overall, you know, kind of like the resolution with, you know, sort of like how these, how the standards are going to get applied and with these accessory structures, et cetera, and whatnot. So, so that'll, that'll get looped, that'll get looped together. So I will, I will follow through on that with having this, this looked at. This particular item looked at as well by town, by town council.
I mean, my opinion is they shouldn't be approving additions and structures without a survey, without a proposed site plan. But.
Well, it depends on how big the lot is.
It's just, you know, if they, if something is approved and built, you know, I've, I've heard of where, you know, if somebody challenges it, it could have to be torn down if it doesn't comply. So, you know, whose liability is it if a building official gives the approval? I don't know. But it's, people were concerned, people were concerned about how the ADUs would affect backyards and, especially in the residency district. But it should be something, whether it's an ADU or not, that they should have assurance that it meets the zoning and setbacks in height. You know, you can't just say, well, yeah, it kind of meets it. As one who has to.
Yeah, so it's there to protect the smaller lots, not the bigger ones.
What'd you say, Maggie?
It's there to protect the smaller lots.
I think Cheryl's point is the correct one. I think if you're, I think having a, having a site plan that, that dimensions where you're, where you're building in proximity to the property lines is basic, simple, and responsible and not that expensive. But eliminates a lot of problems. If I was the building official, I'd want it.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I thought that they.
I'd want it as a homeowner.
Yeah.
I'd want to know where my investment was going.
I, yeah, I mean, it happens too often that somebody misunderstands where their property line is. I have a neighbor who's a, was a dear friend. He's no longer with us any longer. But I had established my property line and put a fence in. And I came home and my neighbor was in a panic because once my property line was established, he recognized that his artesian well was on my property. But over time, we can all lose track of where our lawn ends and where someone else's lawn begins. And that's, that's simply what happened.
Yeah.
It was a non-issue. I mean, we had a great relationship, but it's, it's, it happens.
Yeah. How too often?
Well, we know even scenic road where trees and everything were removed and stone wall because they thought that was the property and it wasn't.
Yeah.
So, all right, so.
Liz, that's great. Thank you. That's.
Yeah, so hopefully, they'll be pretty, fingers crossed, you know, they'll be pretty straightforward when they come in. That it won't be too, too sort of, you know, like, running around with their heads cut off.
Great, great.
We'll see.
Thank you. That's great to have that. And that sort of segues into the ADU bylaw discussion of bylaw amendments needed regarding the Attorney General's correspondence dated October 20, 2025. When I read through these, there were things that we had clearly had talked about, and we questioned ourselves on whether to put those in or not. And I think they were very, it's a matter of striking a few words in places and just taking off some additional language that was sort of superfluous and not even necessary, and wouldn't affect our intent in what we were doing. My question is, and I asked Liz to maybe check with Nick, I believe that you don't have to go back to town meeting if it's very small, minor changes, that that does not mean requiring to go back with the zoning bylaw to town meeting, that the clerk can allow us to, you can strike some of those language before it goes to print. Did you have a chance to speak with?
So I did, I did, I didn't understand, I'll just be perfectly honest, I didn't understand that the AG striking these phrases was, that's how, that's it. They're gone, right?
Yeah.
So there are the items, does not include a mobile home trailer, how it mounted, but that's one statement that's been struck by the Attorney General. Another statement, and shall not be less than 350 square feet, that's been struck. And then the third one is, or otherwise for boarding and lodging or other commercial use, that's been struck. So when this gets published by the town clerk, those three state, those three.
Just get removed.
Are just removed. And then, were you interested in some other language that beyond, beyond those three?
No, I just.
Things that were being struck?
No, and that was my, always my understanding from town council is, they can still, they can still accept our article, but they'll strike certain things that are.
I mean, that's my, I personally have, I, this is my first time dealing with the bylaw where language has been struck by the Attorney General. So I'm assuming that's the process, that what gets, what gets published by the town clerk will be a version of this article with those three phrases struck.
Yeah.
And that, and that, and once that's published, that will be the, that will be the official bylaw.
Correct. And the question is, does it, does it get printed with those items that are struck? Or are they just out of it?
I don't know. Maybe that will be something for, to ask the town clerk.
I mean, I would think not having it in it would be more clear.
I agree.
I would not want to see, like, language that, yeah, an edited version.
That's what my understanding is. I just want to make sure Sue Galvin, when she prints it, that that's the way it goes.
You know, I think it's a really good question. If the Attorney General strikes those sections, I would think they would want a resubmission of your article, now revised, to comply with what they struck. And that ends up being the permanent, you know, bylaw. I mean, I can't imagine that that is the end of it. You're not going to publish that.
I think it might be.
Really?
But again, it's town council that.
Okay.
But it doesn't have the strike, it doesn't have those, it just.
And they just trust that we did it? And then if we didn't do it, and somebody challenges it, the AG says, no, this is what we approved from Milton, so it would hold up.
But as a town, we don't want a bylaw that has.
No, no, absolutely not. Yeah, we look like kindergartners.
But I don't think we have to resubmit it. I think it just can be accepted.
I just, we need town council to tell us.
We do, we do.
And tell us what we need to do with this bylaw. I don't, I don't trust that we have the expertise to know how to handle a legal document from the AG.
I completely agree.
So I would like town council's advice on what to do, because I read through it, and it's not clear to me that that's what we have to do, and also whether we should consider any other changes to the language. We have new town council now, it wasn't here at the time it was drafted.
Right.
And that would be my recommendation.
Definitely, I want to get town councils, but that's.
Yeah, I agree.
I believe what I've been told before, but, yeah, we should get confirmation, one way or the other.
So, just so I know what you guys want. So are we looking for a memo from town council on, like, what, next steps on dealing with the, dealing with the.
The AG's letter?
Yeah, I guess a written response, Liz. You know, what do we do now with the bylaw that's been edited by the AG?
What is required, yeah.
Okay.
And not just those three bullet points, the other cautionary things, because I don't think we want to be caught up in challenges right off the bat. I mean, if there's something we need to clear up, you know, to make more clear about, let's say, denial, for example.
I wasn't thinking we touched the other things. I thought it was just those three, and we just stopped there. I mean, those are.
I'd like the town council's opinion on all of it, the whole letter.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think it can't hurt.
Okay.
And maybe this new town council has a better.
Could be.
A better EDU bylaw that they would recommend.
Because if you read the language of it, they say that part of why something is stricken is because we don't have it elsewhere in the zoning.
Right, yes.
So the recommendation might be to revise the zoning and keep it the way it is.
Yeah, like the mobile home trailer.
Yeah, I want the whole thing looked at, because.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, and we don't want trailers anywhere in town.
Yeah, but they still have to, yeah. I mean, we're getting trailers, they just have to be permanently attached. I get it.
I mean, the reasons for striking certain things have to do with what's already in our zoning bylaw. And so the question is, do you take, keep the strikes, or do you revise the zoning bylaw?
Well, isn't there two possible reasons? Well, that's one of the reasons. The other reason is that we're not aligned with the state, right? So there are two possible reasons.
Yeah, but they say here on, for example, on the, both the trailer and the boarding and lodging, it has to do with our bylaw. So two out of the three. And prohibiting the size is related to the regulation itself, because of the size of the home could be a certain size, and 350 might be more restrictive.
Well, if we, I mean, let's see what he has to say. We may want to go back and change some of our zoning. If we feel strongly about some of these aspects, the size thing is always going to concern me. Now, there's no minimum size.
It's driven by the, it's driven by the building code, which is small, which is really small.
Yeah.
110 square feet for a bedroom, I think, and I don't know what it is for a studio apartment, but not much more.
Now, Mike's going to have to sweat that, sweat that out. I mean, it just makes his work harder.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Great, all right. Thank you for that. And then our last item, we were just, we sort of started to talk a little bit about our fiscal year '27 planning board budget request. And Liz, if you want to talk about that, I know you have sort of submitted our level funding, because that was asked.
Yeah, the request was, the request was level funding. So this is just, this is just showing the, this doesn't show any staff. My position and Avante's position are in the selectmen's, I believe, in a different budget. The part-time admin is in the planning board budget, but that's, that was sort of arranged a specific way with a stipend from CPC and what have you. So that's still kind of being worked out, so I didn't bother to, I didn't bother to really, you know, put any, put stuff, put information on that in front of you tonight. So what you're looking at is mostly just, you know, the general expenses for the board, and then the big item is really the planning studies. So as Cheryl pointed out earlier, there's still funding appropriated for this current fiscal year, $50,000 is available. There's an ask for an additional $50,000, which would be fiscal '27, which starts July 1 of '26. So that, you know, roughly within the next six months, in theory, that's about $100,000 worth of, you know, assuming the $50,000 comes through. Within six to seven months, that's roughly 100 grand in funding for planning studies. If there's a desire for additional funds, you know, I know there was some discussion as well about, you know, making a request for free cash potentially for something specific. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there. I was trying to get a better understanding of, like, you know, timing on some of these things. I know part of it as well is not really having a really strong grasp yet on what something's going to cost. I mean, I know what some studies have costed that I've worked on in the last couple of years, and everything's, everything's $50,000 and up, you know? I mean, even for simple, simple things, it's just, it's just the way things are. So, yeah, so that's what's there. But again, you know, if there's something that you want me to bring back in terms of additional resources, or.
So one thing, Liz, you mentioned the admin's support. There's no line item here. CPC has only been around a few years.
Yep.
And admin was here well before CPC passed.
Yes, yep.
So that was a town budget item that didn't come out of CPC funding.
Right, yes.
So can you explain how now, there's no, it doesn't even show here for fiscal?
I didn't, I, that's, that's me. I didn't, I didn't bother to print that page that had the, that had the part-time admin listed on it. It's, I can provide that to you. It's, I think, oh, God, I'd have to, I'd have to look it up to see what the funding was, but it's, I think it's based on a 22 and 1/2 hour position. And I believe it was also kind of, there was a stipended component as well to support the CPC. So I don't, I don't know, because that, because that position's vacant right now, I'm kind of like, I don't, I'm not working with a lot of information right now.
So I just know as CPC meeting, that the chair said that this is an item under discussion, because there's an interest from the town administrator to have more CPC funding for an admin position than had been before. And there's been a real question about whether the CPC needs that additional admin support.
Okay.
And so it hasn't been approved yet at the CPC.
Okay.
You know, for, because it would come out of CPC admin funding, and that, you know, there's a, that would increase the admin amount, and that means there would be less funding available for projects. And so it's a discussion point. So I'm not comfortable saying we shouldn't have any admin funding in our request when that's not been a decision that's been made. And we still have to go to town meeting, perhaps, even, because all of the allocations out of CPC, I don't know, maybe on the admin side, it just lies within the committee. But I'm just raising it as something that's not decided yet. And I, and if this is going, and I just felt like you all should know about that discussion.
So I'm confused. Are we splitting our 22 and 1/2 hours with the CPC, or?
The former admin person, you know, Julia.
Yeah.
She had, you know, a full-time position that was composed of part-time here and part-time for CPC.
Okay.
And the part-time here was funded of this budget.
22 and 1/2 hours.
Out of the planning.
Yeah, I thought it was 19 hours.
I don't remember how many.
I thought it was planning board was 19, for some reason.
Honestly, I'd have to go back and look at the number of hours. That, that part-time position, whether it's 19 or 22 and 1/2, that number from fiscal '26 was carried forward to fiscal '27. So I should have, I should have brought that page as well. I didn't. And part of it was because I wasn't 100% certain if there was going to be potentially maybe additional funding for some, for some more resource. So, and exactly, and whether or not that stipend was specific to sort of like a prior, a prior, you know, staffer and arrangements. I just don't, didn't have all the answers to that. So the part-time position for the planning board is still there, and then additional funding potentially from CPC is, I guess, is being discussed.
For her to work for the CPC, right? Not for her to work for us.
You would very specifically need to be supporting CPC projects.
If they're, yeah, that's what I'm trying to clear up, yes.
And what comes up is, because my position actually in Braintree was funded through the CPC, is there's a lot of crossover, because the CPC projects tend to be in the arena of multiple planning projects, whether it's housing, whether it's historic preservation, whether it's, you know, open space, you know, preservation. A lot of those projects that the CPC is involved in and funding tend to, tend to, you know, tend to be, to be ones that the planning staff would be consulting on.
So our budget then is $55,900 plus whatever Julia's.
Position pays.
Position pays, so it's plus whatever that is.
That makes sense.
And as far as the $50,000 that we have this fiscal year, I don't know if that's part of this discussion, if it's still. I think it's relevant, because when we ask for 50, if we're not spending the 50 we have this year, you know, you're giving back to free cash, right? So what did we think that, I mean, we've talked, yeah, like what we're. So their funding, I saw in your memo for the housing production plan, they were going to be a request to the Affordable Housing Trust. So we don't necessarily have to.
That's what we're waiting on some of these, because we don't know yet.
And then, as far as we know, like, the economic development study could need some funding, and maybe that's some of planning board.
I'd like to see that one done.
Yeah, I think finishing something before starting something new is important.
And then codification too, right? Is that going to come from us, or?
So that's where I, it's a good, if there's no other source of funding for it, I mean, this has been, Alex Whiteside was working on this codification when he.
It's the first thing I voted on when I came on the board, yeah.
You know, this is how long it's been in the process. So I feel like that's another unfinished piece of business, again, that would be good to get done.
So if we're going to do that, then we need to increase our request, because it's $50,000.
Well, right, but there's also, what I heard Cheryl say as well was, you know, we've got the economic feasibility analysis with MAPC, which needs to get wrapped up. We've got the open space and recreation plan, which needs to get wrapped up. The economic development plan, which in theory was launched and then just kind of stopped, right? So you've already got three plans that are in some, some level of completion. So, you know, are you going to, are you going to bite off a fourth plan in the next, in the next, you know, what, six months?
So I think on the, my understanding is the open space and recreation was already funded. Is that correct?
I just mean in terms of, I just mean in terms of, yes, yes, it has been funded. More in terms of, like, workflow.
Work capacity.
And resource. I mean, so I think there's a, I get the sense that there's going to be some, there's a receptiveness to finding additional funding for planning studies, but I, but I'm just thinking, trying to think through sort of like how this is, how this is going to sync up.
So what there was before, there was a bylaw review committee that was general bylaw review, and it has now completed and is no longer in existence. But they had a subcommittee that was working on the zoning bylaw. And I would think that because of the opportunity to save resources, save time with, you know, the building commissioner and the building, you know, the planning department, you know, that there could be representative from our board and one of you, and hopefully that, you know, Michael or somebody from his office, and with Sue Galvin, kind of get up to speed on where things were left off, and at least identify, you know, the first step of that next level of codification, because there was an, there was an audit done, and the audit said you should, you should address these things. And maybe it can be done in phases, then, if it doesn't have to be the whole thing. But there, even for the basics of compliance with state law or consistency with state law, and tables of use and dimensional tables, definitions, things like that. So that's not like changes in terms of other kinds of, you know, bylaw change, but.
But I think with the workflow, that would, that would absolutely take a consultant to be working on that.
To do the work is a consultant, for sure. And, you know, that's who did the codification before. I mean, they could, that part of the codification, though, that is the fixes, the inconsistencies, could be done by the same consultant who put it together in the first place. And Sue Galvin has the contract for the updates, because I had asked, like, when we, you know, we approve these new zoning bylaws, how do they get put into the E-code? And she said that that's under contract in the clerk's office. So I just.
They're posted to the title page. Have you seen them?
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, they're posted, but they're not incorporated in the body of the document.
Okay, so that's what we need to get back to. I thought that that was what she.
That was, that was pretty recent stuff, though.
Yeah.
Because I, because I was the first thing, one of the first things I did was make sure I had the most current bylaw.
Just so you know, even the 40B developers who have their expensive attorneys have made mistakes in the list of relief they need, because our zoning bylaw is that challenging to work with, right? And the more you dig into it, the more you'll see.
Yeah.
And the more, I think, why I continue to advocate for the codification. And, you know, to your, to your point about. And, you know, to your, to your point about how many things can be, you know, handled, it would be good to know what the timeline is for finishing these other pieces that are out there. But what we're talking about now for next fiscal year, we're talking about starting next July. And so I think, you know, we should hope that these other initiatives are done by next July, since they've been in the works for years. And, you know, and I do think a prioritization on the codification for next fiscal year.
Yeah, I'm thinking next, the next fiscal year.
So Liz, when they asked you for level funding, was that before or after the override? Before?
I, I don't know.
So last year.
I honestly don't know.
Must have been before.
It would be after because she just started.
Yeah, after, okay.
So Tim had put in last year.
Why would they ask for level funding if we have $4.5 million in free cash?
We didn't make it in.
We should go for like 150 to get all this stuff done. There seems to be plenty of money around.
So they asked for level funding, not level service, Liz? That was the request, level funding?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I'd have to go back and look at the wording on the guidance that I got, but, but, you know, beyond, you know, contractual obligations for union. But I think it was pretty much just, you know, kind of carry forward. I mean, I made a couple of minor adjustments based on, you know, actuals for the past couple of years. Like one of your budgets is always like in the negative, I don't know why, advertising. So I just kind of adjusted that a little bit. But, yeah, that's, I didn't, I didn't really do a whole lot beyond that.
That was a lot, we had a lot more public hearings than would typically with MBTA.
And a lot of narrative to go into the times.
Yeah. But, and I do believe that if we go in with a $50,000 again, some of these things are so important to the town that we should be able to, if we can't get the grant funding, we should be able to get free cash funding for these things. And Nick felt comfortable that, that something like the recodification, if we need the funding in, that would be expensive. And the housing production plan, we have to update that.
We have to, that's important.
So.
That protects us from 40Bs. It's our only protection from 40Bs until we get to save.
And so maybe half of it comes from us and half comes from the selectments budget.
And they can go for the free cash. You know, the free cash, when I was on the Warren Committee, that was supposed to be for unexpected expenses. Like if you had an expected expense, like we've been talking about doing this for a few years, I don't know how this current Warren Committee is going to think about it, but it's not unexpected to me.
But in the question was, we also questioned whether recodification should come even from the planning department because this is a town-wide, you know, making sure that our, for our building commissioners, that they have something that can work, that it's, it's not necessarily just planning, it's something that is essential to functioning.
Just because we worked on it to have it done, doesn't mean we should be the source for funding it.
For funding it, yeah. And that came with the first round.
Well, you know, just for history, Sue Galvin originally really wanted to get the codification of all the bylaws done. And the, I was on the planning board at the time and we had funds and we were reaching towards the end of the fiscal year and we, she came into this room and made the case, you know, by the zoning bylaws should, you know, be included. And we voted to allocate the funds because we felt it was important and it wasn't going to get done otherwise. So, you know, I am all for seeing if we can get a split because it does affect the departments. But, and being able to use people's time wisely, having this updated. But I also think if we're at a point where we're getting towards the end of the fiscal year and we still have a lot of cash left, I'd like to get that cash put to use at least in the partial contract and then get the rest of the contract the next fiscal year, rather than send the cash back.
I mean, this is a matter of, it's not whether it is going to get done, it's going to get done, the recodification. I might as well do it if we get to that point where we have funds available, put it to work.
So that's why I think it's worth getting a proposal and at least having a conversation. Maybe it's not a working group, maybe it's a conversation between yourself, Michael and Sue Galvin about, you know, what it would take to do the things, at least in, that we're in that audit. And I read the audit several years ago, I don't remember all the details in it, except that there were some things like, that were non-compliant with state law and.
You said there was a report from a committee?
Report from the consultant.
Oh, from consultant, but there was also like a committee report.
Yeah, you know, if.
It was a bylaw review committee or something?
Yes.
Peter Mullen.
Kathleen O'Donnell was our current CBA chair, was on that committee.
Okay.
But the report itself that came out, if, I think I probably have a copy, an online copy or electronic copy somewhere.
Yeah, that would be helpful because I'm sure, like you said, like 70% of these things have already been flagged. Because I'm sure they've been driving people crazy forever, right?
And the other thing is, one of the things that I liked about KP Law is they have experience with recodification. So if we could do some of this in-house, it might save us money from going to a really expensive outside consultant. It might be something that they have somebody in their, one of their departments who can help us.
So you heard from Michael, one of the frustrations, he's read three pages of what, he thinks he knows what the requirements are and then he flips the page and it says, oh, but not, never mind.
Ignore that.
That's the kind of thing where people might not have read the fourth page, you know, because they thought they had their answer.
Right.
That's the kind of thing that we're talking about. We're not talking about like, you know, a rewrite of what's, you know, the dimensional standards in the residence zones, you know? We're talking about making it user-friendly.
Right.
So do you need a vote from us tonight, supporting the $50,000 request? I mean, obviously we.
Yeah.
Feel we could, in part of your narrative that we are, we feel justified to request additional funds.
I don't feel comfortable supporting the 55.9 yet until we know about the admin funding from CPC.
What is your timeframe on when you need a vote?
I, you know what, let me, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Nick. I'll talk to Nick and kind of check in because honestly, I'm brand new to this and I, I don't know exactly what the next step is as far as.
There's a lot of things up in the air and questions.
Yeah.
Well, I feel like budgets are due, according to the Budget Coordination Committee, I think by December 1st. I mean, it's coming up pretty quickly.
Yeah, so we won't have another meeting.
We have a CPC meeting tomorrow night, but I don't believe this is on, that is on the agenda.
I think it's the first.
So what's the downside to asking for more than the 55? I mean, it just sounds like we need more money. I know we were, it was suggested that we ask for level funding, but why couldn't we ask for more based on, I mean, for some reason, 40 grand for recodification sticks into my mind. And I don't know what the economic study is going to cost, but it seems like we have.
That's what Tim had said, he thought it was going to be.
I could have swore that, so anyway.
Sounds about right, although that was probably two years ago, right?
And that's why I think we buffered, we sort of asked for 50,000 for that reason.
I remember him saying he could, that we should go for a lot more, like 150. I remember having that discussion at a meeting.
I thought we put in for 150 one year.
I could have swore, but so anyway, the point is, can we ask for more or are we just, you know, is 55 our number? Because it was, 50 was our number last year.
I think you can ask for more, I think you just have to make the case.
Right, I think we just made the case.
The answer can always be no.
Right.
You know?
Right, yeah. All right.
I mean, we definitely.
So if we find out how much.
5, because we need Julia in that. And then add another 40 for recodification.
And that doesn't even touch the economic study.
There's the 20.
Or 14 grand in it, but we don't know. I think Liz mentioned it was going to be 150.
We're not having another meeting this month, so I think Liz would have to submitted, you know, that request, we would have to ask her to submit that request tonight.
Well, I mean, I would say at minimum it would be 90, you know, the 50 that we have plus 40, but.
I mean, we don't know, I don't know what was carried last year for admin, but it was in this budget last year, so.
Oh, yeah, the admin is over and above the 55.9. That's, that's over and above. That position is over and above. I think it's, it's in the 20, I'd have to go back and look actually.
So I guess what we could say is, you know, that in terms of the budget request, if you need some kind of a vote tonight, that I would say, you know, we would need to have a pending resolution of how the admin position is funded. And I agree with Jim that we should ask for additional funds. And they can always be, you know, not available, but.
And we're pretty frugal. We don't seem to use all of our money. We'll go back to free cash.
And we, we do, you know, a lot with grant money.
Mm-hmm. But that seems to be drying up and, you know, I'd like to see the recodification done at minimum.
And, you know, if the admin gets funded, you know, through CPC.
But wouldn't that only be their portion, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but wouldn't that only be their, that would only be the portion that she's working for them?
Yeah.
We still have to come up with our 20 somewhere, right?
So let me.
I mean, none of the projects that have been funded in the last three years have come through the planning board, you know, they're.
Does the position get benefits? Because if the position doesn't get benefits, then it's under 20 hours. At 20 hours or more, it triggers the benefits.
So the number I'm seeing is 40, is 41, 41,200. That's the number I'm seeing for FY '27.
41,200?
Yeah, and it's 0.6 FTE.
What does 0.6 FTE mean?
Full-time equivalent. So, yeah, so three, three out of five days. So, yeah, so that, that was, that was, that was sort of like status quo, assuming, assuming that same person was still in the position.
So last year's budget was 97,000 and change?
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at that. I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not as prepared for this as I should be. And, but in fairness to myself, it's partly because that position is sort of, you know.
You can give yourself a break, Liz, it's just fine. You're doing a lot. Come on, take it easy.
You've been running a whole department.
Jeez.
Unloading everything.
I know, it's easy for us, there's five people firing away at you.
Just unloading you.
Liz, are you saying that the 41,2 is outside of the $50,000?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so the number really doesn't matter to us.
That's, yeah.
And we're outside of it.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, so this is.
But, you know, I think if we, if we're making a request, if we could establish an approximate value for the items that we want and then submit it, right? The specific, specific items that we need the funds for, what we think that's going to cost us and make that submission, whether that ends up being 60, 70, 80, or 90, whatever it is. If we think it's 40,000 for recodification, establish that.
I think it's more than, I think it's probably six, you know, again. But again, we don't know exactly.
But we have, what, three days to figure it out?
If we say 40, that's our share of it.
Thanksgiving in the middle.
And if there's a town council share of it, and if there's a select board share of it, we don't have to submit for 100% if we don't feel like it's 100% our responsibility.
40, 40, I think that sounds good then.
And we refer to our 40 as planning board share, just so there's no misunderstanding.
Right, so then the motion will be the 50,000 for studies and the 40,000 for codification, planning board's share of the codification. The rest of it is whatever Liz and Town Administrator work out for the department. How's that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's great, but in fear of getting rejected for the 90, would they come back to us and say, well, what are studies? I understand the 40 for codification, but like what are studies?
Well, you know, each year they, if people have asked a little bit about, we can say what we think we, it might go towards, but we're talking like a year and a half from now and we, we don't even know, like, things can come up like, that are even a requirement by the legislature again, you know, like there's, you know, I actually.
That's fair.
No, that's good, so you're justifying the number and that's great. That's what I'm asking. It's fantastic.
I sat in on American Institute of Architects Massachusetts, chapter of the Government Affairs Committee yesterday, and they went over like five or six housing bills that are pending in the state legislature and one or two of them related to zoning. And then there's, you know, so we don't know what's going to come out of these things. So I think.
Good.
You know, if we think about, like, there are things that we had on our list, we don't have our list in front of us tonight, but there are zoning things that we have on our list. Right, and so we.
It's not a big ask for 90 and it's justifiable, that's great, good.
50 has been a standard for a long time and it's, we get asked for matching funds sometimes when there's a grant application, like you, we've, MAPC is, some of the work that they've done for us has been a matching grant. We've had to come up with some cash, you know? And the work that they did, you know, for East Milton Overlay, remember it was the last minute and picked $10,000 because we could get it in on our agenda fast enough to get it to the deadline, get the deadline done in time. But it's like, so that was a $10,000 match for probably a $30,000 fee that they, they came in with. So, and, so we don't know. You may be applying for something and we need a match.
Yep.
So 90 is not unreasonable, so it's just.
Nope.
Not unreasonable and justifiable. Okay, cool, great.
All right, so let's just take a vote.
I'm on board.
Could I have a motion to support the request of a $90,000 fiscal '27?
I think we should be specific that 40 of that is targeted for codification, up to any board.
All right, do you want to make that motion?
I'll make it. I'll make a motion to support a $50,000 request for planning studies and a $40,000 request for a planning board contribution to zoning bylaw codification.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that'll hopefully help you, Liz, when you go into that meeting, since we're not available to meet, so. All right, so our last item on the agenda, if there's nothing else, is to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Good, thank you.